Roll call please.
Councilman Gray?
Here.
Councilwoman Green?
Here.
Councilwoman Gray?
Here.
Councilwoman Leffler?
Here.
Councilman Petty?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hackett?
Here.
Hating right around here for our great science. For those of you who haven't met, I think I've been before, but I know your mother is for New York. But, I'm glad you're there.
Thank you.
In any event, I'm here for our.
Ma'am, this call I have a question. There was some information that was sent to some of the councilmen. If we wanted to put it on tonight's agenda, can I do that? Can I make a motion to do that?
That's, it's up to you. Wait, wait till we get to that. We're not even to that. I'll let you know when it's time.
See, okay.
But, um, if you look at your agendas, this is just for, this is for next month. If you look, you have two agendas. One is one change to the one that's not in effect. It just, I want to show you what it looked like and I wanted y'all to look at it and see if it's something you agree. It's the one with the yellow, it's this.
The hot one, okay.
The highlighted portion is the only change. And I want y'all to think if that's, if y'all want to change that, we can. If you don't want to, we don't want to.
Yeah?
Yes.
Yes.
So y'all would like to see that on the agenda for the next meeting?
Opening prayer and pledge of allegiance.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, we'll go ahead, I guess we'll go ahead and take a hold on that while we're here. I was gonna wait till the next one to put on the agenda, but, uh...
He just wants to add that to our normal meetings to highlight.
Thank you.
You made the motion?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? Okay, so this will be the mo- agenda heading we use from now on going forward. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for the October 3rd meeting, November 21st meeting, and the November 7th meeting. Everybody had a chance to look at those, the minutes? Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? Passed, okay. Next item on the agenda is citizens' concerns. Whatever do y'all want to go into?
Missed one.
Which one did I miss? Oh wait, I'm sorry, consideration of non-emergency invoices over ten thou- $10,000. That's the one Scott wants to speak on.
We're returning much as well.
Okay. What I'd like you to, to look at is you have this report here that's passed out to you. Called expense approval report. It'll be one here. Probably four in the stack over there. I'll give you a hint about these reports. The ones that are on the table when you come in, they're in the order in which we are proceeding. So if you, like other groups that I've worked with, first thing we all do is take it and stro it and then it's hard to find stuff. But, any case, so this expense approval report, our current purchasing policy says if we spend any money over $10,000, the council has to approve it. So I want to explain just a little bit about the process. And attached to that, you have this purchase order. You see this? I know you're getting bombarded with a lot tonight, but it'll eventually make all sense. So, this is one that you haven't seen, but I want you to see how our present procedure works. Cause you're actually doing it three times, okay? Look down at the bottom, I've highlighted the bottom. First is, the last thing, it says council approval. But you got, there's, that's the other, right there, purchase word. So on this one, when we did the budget for FY 24-25, we budgeted to do park improvements, okay? So if you look at the bottom of that, it says council approval. It's the next page there, right there. There you go.
Thanks.
You see, council approval, I wanted you to do this, see what happens under our present purchasing policy. Right now, it is in the budget, okay? We approved to expend the money then, okay? Then, you, our present purchasing policy says if we have a bid that's over $10,000, the council has to approve that we accept the bid, which bids to be accepted. And then our purchasing policy says you have to approve me to write the check, okay? Well, that's okay on this one here, okay? Cause you, all that's fine. But I'm just showing you, it's an inefficient system. It's been much improved in the prior administration, but there's still room that we can do. But ultimately, that becomes your decision. And the, the, the flat out of it is, how much control do you want over every dollar spent, okay? So, look at this page, the expense approval report, okay? I have only included on here, in the general and water sewer fund, or actually all the funds, if there is a total amount over $10,000, okay? Look at this first one, it's the health insurance fund. I'm gonna pay that before, I mean, we're gonna pay that every month, okay? Um, I can't imagine that somebody would say, no, don't pay that. The retirement system, I'm gonna pay that every month, it's over $10,000, okay? Uh, the next one that's there says, uh, diamond equipment, okay? Well, both of those items were approved in prior council meetings, okay? And subsequently, I've written a check, okay? But technically, I would've waited on printing the check over a month and a half cause we had a lack of quorum last time. It'd be two months before we'd have paid these folks, okay? And they got babies to feed too. But it had already been approved in the budget and the bids had been approved, okay? Alright, the next one is the division of state and local finance. Now, this is our loan payments, okay? With all the loans, I'm gonna pay that every month, otherwise, we won't get any more money if we ever want it, okay? But it is, this shows two months, cause we paid one month, uh, early. It was a holiday or whatever, I don't remember exactly what. But normally, that's $10,365, okay? The next one, GNC supply. Once again, that $15,193, council had approved the bid, cause we had to get a bid on it. They already approved the bid, alright? So that is to be paid. The next one down is the health insurance fund for the water sewer. Same concept, we're gonna pay that every month. I'm just kinda laying the frown work, the groundwork for us to discuss the purchasing policy that we have in February, or whenever you guys decide that we're actually gonna discuss it. So technically, there should be a motion to approve these expenditures and a second, and then a vote, um, but we're trying to keep you fully advised of, of everything that's there. Now, if you want it, I can print off a report now that shows every check that's written in every fund, okay? You can look at a six-page document that'll have over 300 checks on it, okay? What I'm saying to you is, it's all available if you want it. This new system we have, we can do that, so be glad to answer any questions on any of them.
If not, at this time, I'll take the one.
Motion to approve?
What was the motion for now?
To approve the expenditures.
Oh, okay.
Well, that's my phone, was that, or?
No, it just, that's just for that paper you have in your hand. Cause we haven't spent next month.
Is it? Well, let's get that first.
Any, any other discussion? Okay, do a roll call vote.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilman Leffler?
Yes.
Councilman Petty?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hackett?
Yes.
Okay. Item on the agenda.
This is kind of along the lines of this, if I can ask a question. Is it feasible for Scott to pick out the ones like the, the insurance law?
Yes.
That is every month, so that they can be approved a one-time bill?
We have to approve the level of money, cause right now, we're capped at $10,000. That's what the person...
But I, but there's, but we can't interject into there.
Well, you, you, are you gonna say you're gonna do this for insurers, but not for this? You have to, it has to be equal across the board, you understand what I'm saying? Cause if not, is, is services, I don't think services any different, is it Scott?
Uh, our part policy doesn't differentiate.
Yes.
It's anything that's $10,000 or more.
If we wanted to say, Scott, you can pay the consolidated retirement and the insurance.
We gotta change the first, the purchasing policy.
You have to raise the limit up to pay those things, if not, we're breaking the policy every time we do it.
Okay.
Alright, now we're to citizens' concerns. Is everyone signed in that's gonna speak? Or everyone that's signed in that's here? Whoever wants to go first, come on up, state your name and...
Good evening. Good evening, mayor, council members. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Bruce Wormuth, I'm the veteran service officer here in Smith County. The reason why I'm up here tonight speaking is to go ahead and ask the city council to reconsider a sign permit request that we put in back in May 14th of this year. Uh, we did not hear back. We requested from the mayor to let us know what was going on in October. Received a email in October 24th and we were turned down with the sign permit request, excuse me, due to that it was, uh, public parking. We could not reserve parking for veterans. The space that we're requesting is right out in front of the legion post. My office is inside of the legion post. We have certain veterans that come, that are disabled, that come to me. About 90% of them come through there. Um, the other thing is we have, we have surviving spouses that come and pick up the food baskets. They pick up once a month. Sometimes they have to park way down the block. We have to bring them baskets, the baskets are about 40, 40 pounds apiece, something like that. Um, but the main reason, uh, requesting reserved parking for veterans is that the VA is starting to do telehealth. A lot of the veterans here in Smith County are not computer savvy, they don't have computers, they don't know how to get online. And offered my services in my office to these veterans. They have to call me, make an appointment, come in at that appointment time. Where we, where we then contact the VA to go ahead and provide that service for them. That is the main reason why we requested this. The, the requested parking, reserved parking would only be 20 hours a week. And that is for Monday, Tuesday, 8 o'clock in the morning to 4:00 PM in the afternoon, and on Wednesday, Wednesday morning from 8:00 AM to 12:00 noon. We have a petition that was sent around. A lot of the veterans, legion members, signed this. And our neighbors, business neighbors up there, signed this petition also. Um, so they're okay with it. That's about it, we'd just like to go ahead and present this, you know, request to the council and let them, let y'all make a decision. Hopefully, you make the right decision. If you need, I have some copies here of the previous one. We would like to amend our previous request on two things. We, the previous request was for two signs. If we get one, we'll be happy. Uh, the other thing also is about the measurement for the sign. We'd like a standard sign measurement of 18 inches high, 12 inches wide. And if you'd like, here's the, uh, copy of the previous request. If, if y'all wanna see copies of this, I have copies, six copies here for, like, to share. And anybody else? Okay. And, uh, mayor, um, there's some question, are you a veteran, sir?
I sure am.
Alright, and what branch you serving?
I was in the army.
Army, and the years you served?
From 1984 to 91, I think it was.
91, thank you, sir, thank you for your service.
Thank God for, for y'all.
Veteran service officers up there for you, if you want, and I can do anything for you. Please come and visit. And we'd like to see you at more of our events, by the way, being a veteran.
Well, uh, me and you will talk offline about that. I joined the army for me, I didn't join it for being in the public with it, but that's, that's your bi- your business. So we'll talk offline about that, okay?
I don't, I serve all veterans.
I know you do, I know you do.
Thank you for this time, Steve.
And I'll let the council know, I talked with our attorney about this. I've called with the engineer about giving them a parking spot. What happens is you got a main drag, you assign one parking spot, wants to stop every other business from, and they're saying, okay, you gave the legion one, we want two. We want three, we want four. It's gonna turn into a legal nightmare, what it's gonna be. I would love nothing more than for the sign up for them to do that. But what's gonna happen is, is I gotta treat everybody the same, so if we do it for them, we gotta do it for everybody else down that street. Yeah, they signed the petition today, but when they see that, hey, this looks up pretty good, I want my own spot, what we gonna do?
And we can't make it.
Yeah, we can't make it handicap. We had the engineer back out there trying to find a way, they can't make it, I was gonna make it a handicap spot, that way we have less parking, but they, the engineer can't make it into a handicap spot.
What about on the, the side of Ken's Framing Art? If we're going downhill, it's not one of the new public parking spots. The, uh, restrictions on us taking the front row parking in front of the businesses are not ADA compliant. However, I do believe one going downhill on the sidewalk at Ken's Framing Art at the entrance of, uh, the staircase down to Evil's Tavern, that might, could be arranged?
The grade?
Years?
The grade for...
The grade won't work there?
Won't be, we've checked the areas to try and put one close to, cause they need a, they need a handicap spot, I agree.
Yeah, I gotta go back out and look at all that.
That won't work, I remember talking about that.
The problem is, is the, the age of the building and the, the road slope, that's the problem.
What about, like a courtesy sign? Just, it's not enforceable, but...
If I remember, it used to be saved for Mr. Bass, didn't it?
The one I was asking about, that's what I was...
Let me explain how that happened. Someone decided to tell someone to go put a sign up without one in the planning commission, checking the legal, checking on anybody. They just did it. There's no re- there's no warnings, there's no resolutions, or nothing for that sign.
But that would, that would help a lot of the elderly veterans to do telehealth.
I'm not saying...
I mean, I know.
So, so the wording, how, how could, and, and, and if that's a better spot, would that be conducive for your building? You know, we're talking about...
The first spot there, um, that would, yeah, that would give us access, yeah.
So, so how could we word that to make it not necessarily a disabled, but...
Really, disabled is the only one that you can do, but if it won't work because of the ADA requirements and the engineer can't cause that to happen, then there's no way to do it. Can't reserve a public parking spot in that venue. I don't know that there's anything to stop, if, I, I'm not familiar exactly with how your building is and the parking service. Um, there wouldn't be anything necessarily stopping them from putting a sign on the side of their building if the sign is otherwise allowed, that says, please, uh, park elsewhere.
Yes.
Just as, as a courtesy, as a sign. But you couldn't enforce it and if somebody doesn't respect you, then...
Well, I think that's what we'll probably do, is we'll probably get a sign saying, please, Mr. Eric.
In front of your building?
Yes, sir.
And just put it on your building.
Put on, put on, put on a post, we roll out in the morning and bring back in the afternoon.
Well, you can't roll out on a post on a city sidewalk. Um, again, I'm not familiar with the...
That's against, it's against open access.
If you can put it on your building, I don't know how it's...
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, if you can hang it on the side of your building, please, please, reserve, please, uh, save these parking spots for veterans, Mondays or Tuesdays, or whatever it is.
Yeah, that, that's, like I said, I've tried every which way to get you on that spot, I promise you. I mean, we called the engineer out, so I said, just check one more time, he said, there's nothing we can do.
A better way to do it would be to make it a handicap spot.
Well, we can't do that, that was my thing, that's a first thing, handicap, that way no one will park there. But again, a handicap because of the DVA compliant, and then we'd get in trouble, same handicap parking.
And it's not in...
Can they go across the... What about right beside of the courthouse, where the library is? What about right there on the corner? Can't do that either?
Well...
Cause you have to go across, across the wall.
There, there's a problem with that, with the crosswalk that comes across there, that ends at 226 Main Street, and the curb is this high, so anybody that's a wheelchair or walker's gonna have problems with that. So that crosswalk is not actually not ADA compliant.
No, it's not.
And, you know, to, effectively, to do it properly, they would have to go across Third Avenue, then cross Main Street, and come back Third Avenue if they're in a wheelchair.
Hmm, and that's a lot of effort for somebody that's in a wheelchair.
Yeah, it's possible, we're scared of putting more handicap parking. We couldn't find any more spots to put handicap parking based on the elevation changes and everything. The engineer said he, they just couldn't do it. And that was when we were talking about redoing Main Street and all that stuff, cause they were wanting to put more handicap parking in the area. If I remember correctly.
You are.
Just that, just wanted y'all to know that.
Thank you.
How's, how's the back of y'all's building?
Say again?
How's the back of y'all's building look? It's...
Uh, that's private property behind there, it belongs to Carter Hardware, I guess, or whatever, so we can't park there.
But, I mean, if we could work something out, could you build a ramp or a door or something from there?
You mean the full two stories?
Um...
Or close to it?
Well, our building is, yes, two-story, but...
I've been to there, but I don't know exactly which building it belongs to. Do you have a back door?
Yes.
The, the back is worse parking than maybe the front.
We can't, we can't do ADA or anything like that out back. Too high.
Okay.
I'm sorry, there's just no way to reserve one, I'd like the filthy.
Good.
But, but he can put a sign on his building.
We just can't, the city can't enforce.
Yeah, I mean, if someone parks there, it's just gonna be someone parked there. Hopefully, people have enough respect to say, okay, they want this spot, we do it.
Alright, very good, alright, understand, thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your service.
Parking later, that, nobody will park there.
Anybody else for further comments?
Just, just a real quick one. Just wanna, first of all, welcome the new council people. Congratulations, we know you're gonna do a great job, like everyone else is. Uh, I sent an email yesterday to all of the council, uh, just with some information that we had gathered since a couple of council meetings back, when, um, the council very wisely voted not to use that property down Upper Ferry and that we were talking about building something next door. And one of the council people who's now retired, asked if we could find someone who is knowledgeable in energy-efficient, cost-effective buildings. And so a group of us did our research and came up with this lady that I sent you the email about, Rachel Spangler, who's approved or came highly recommended by the architectural community of Tennessee, the architectural department of Tennessee, and the former head of architecture at Vanderbilt. She's sent a, a little letter how she could help you do, first of all, the requests for qualifications, cause you gotta do one of those if you're gonna have an architect to design whatever...
Just rephrase that, you don't have to do that.
Well, sir, please don't cut into me.
I'm just telling you...
Please don't cut into me.
I'm just telling you, we don't have to, don't spread misinformation.
You, you need to talk to the architectural department of Tennessee.
I follow my attorney's advice, I'll continue, please.
That's very rude, and I really don't appreciate your cutting into my time. Well, anyway, this lady would be wonderful to help you go through the qualifications that you need to do to bring an architect on board. And she's done this for numerous people over 20, 20-something years now, and comes highly recommended. And I would say, if someone would just say, let's please reach out to her and let her come to one of your meetings and talk to you about what she could offer you help, because this is the first time in a long time you've talked about buying and creating a new building. It won't be done again for a number of years, I hope, so let's get it right the first time with the best people on board that you can use for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, I make a motion to have a...
Hang on one second. Any more citizens' concerns? Nope, okay. Now, we're on to the mayor's report, you said you wanna make a motion?
Yes. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to maybe let us have like a, uh, scheduled special call meeting.
A special call meeting or?
Well, yeah.
For a workshop?
Well, a workshop, to get other people, consultants or other, uh, I don't know, what am I trying to say?
Architects, different people?
Architects, yeah, and get, get an idea, more than just one or two, just see the price, you know, and see what they could come up with.
How much money do you wanna spend to see if people are gonna charge us to come? Oh, they do that, I'm just asking.
You have to pay?
Sometimes.
Well, we'll get an idea.
Why, just, no, you guys said, you said my...
What do you think?
Sit down, it's not your time. You interrupt the meeting, one more time, you're going.
This lady does not charge, and you know she doesn't, it's in there.
Great, great, take her out. She wants to interrupt the meeting, she can go. Yeah, that's real funny. But, what I'm saying is, we'd be happy to, you just gotta say, hey, Steve, you can spend $10,000.
This is really cheap.
Twenty thousand, whatever you say.
Former mayor is being asked to leave because she wants the truth to come out, that's very interesting.
Uh, Ms. Green, are you what, are you maybe talking about, do you want to have, uh, just to kinda talk about the, the city hall projects, or specifically the RFQ situation? Okay, so, uh, I think what she's asking for is basically...
Just a workshop on the city hall?
We get, uh, oh, yeah, yeah.
That's no problem, I said, you said you wanna invite architects and stuff, if you're very professionals, then they tend to...
Well, let's have the workshop first and then see what we need to do after that.
Yes.
Pardon?
When do you wanna propose the meeting?
How about about 30 minutes before the next scheduled meeting?
We're gonna have a public hearing on that one.
We got a public hearing on that one, plus we'll have, uh, it's gonna take more than 30 minutes.
Well, I, when I said that, when I said that, I, I...
Where are we at currently on moving forward with city hall, or discussing city hall? We are nowhere.
That's why we need to get started.
Well, I, I agree, it's all tabled, uh, I can get all the other information we have for what it costs to tear this down, to build right here. Oh, yeah, we need a second before we discuss.
We have the workshop.
Okay, now we discuss. But, I was saying, we, we can get all the information back out and say, because, um, this, this option right here is the worst option we've got, tear this down and rebuild here, it's the most expensive. And remodel, and this one, I think was like 26 mil- 2.6 million. Rebuilding here and tearing down was 5.4 million. And, uh, but that's, any other options we got?
I would just like to see more than one option, I would like three, four options.
What, what options, tell me what you wanna see.
Oh, wow, okay, um...
Cause you still have to pay for them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't wanna talk about Upper Ferry Road anymore, that's for sure. What about, uh, any buildings we could repurpose around here? Is there any new land, any other ideas?
We've got, the Moss Building is still for sale, but...
I'd like to...
The price on that's 1.4 million dollars.
As an option, I would like to at least have some options.
You want the Moss Building?
Sure.
To do on the discussion?
For, for our workshop.
Yeah, so we can talk about all this in the workshop, and we can bring back that thing that shows all the price.
Yeah, we can bring everything back, that way you have all the information that you're serving.
And discuss it all in.
Then you can get the information that you want and say, hey, this is what I want in the city hall, I don't need this, I want this. So, cause those are the plans that we had drawn up for the very basic city hall. You may not want that, you may want something totally different.
So down the pops, you have a workshop going to be scheduled anyway in the near future?
No.
You don't, okay.
Yep, and she's asking to schedule now, so we'll schedule whenever, just Councilman Green, Councilwoman Green wants to.
You want us to give you subject matter for the workshop now?
It's, we know it's gonna be under city hall, I just need to know a date and time.
The next available spot?
December's pretty full, isn't it?
Yeah.
December's full.
I mean, we, we have to put it out and it has to be out.
In the January meeting, we have a...
Won't change it.
Public hearing before then.
Yeah, cause we'll have a second reading of the...
On the ordinance, the female ordinance.
Which, I mean, technically you can do before the public hearing.
You want it to just be at 5:00 before the January meeting and then go until the public hearing at quarter till 6:00?
What do y'all think?
I'm good with it.
That'll give us 45 minutes?
We have another public meeting for the SRF for clean water, right?
On that same day?
On the same day, we can put them both on the same time, though.
You can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can put them from 5:25 to 6:00.
Okay, I'll be right back there.
So is that what y'all wanna do, the 45 minutes prior to the public hearing?
Maybe, I wanna continue to discuss, I, I would, maybe February? Maybe. I wanna continue to discuss. Uh, I would, maybe February, would we have more time to really kinda focus on this?
Then you get into budget time. So, yeah. The next few months are pretty busy.
But I think with the two public hearings, fifteen minutes will suffice, in my opinion.
You generally people for some reason don't come to public hearings on.
But you have, what, four, five minutes?
Yeah, if, if you met at five, you'd have forty-five minutes to do the workshop and then the last fifteen minutes designate to the SRF cleaning water. And then, um, FEMA ordinance, which nobody else should have looked and say anything about, so.
January?
So January?
Is that, is that what y'all want, January?
Before then.
Five o'clock?
Five o'clock before the next January.
January at five o'clock, we're having a workshop from five to five forty-five on city hall.
Okay, and what's the date of that?
Well, that's probably.
That's up for discussion. Cause, uh, the second is our schedule. And I hope anybody's gonna be out of town or not be around on the second of January.
It's on your's eve, I guess.
If it takes two days, you probably don't need to be here anyway.
Thank you. I think we need to get this budget going.
I'm, I'm good.
You know, you've got these people down here. Bad conditions. Thank you. Bad conditions.
It's, it is, it's pretty bad. Like I said, it took me four months to get my last next surgery to get my voice back because of this building, but.
Yeah.
It's, it is what it is. What, um.
So we had a second?
Yeah, everything now, uh, everybody agree on that? We don't have to vote on it. Just agree on it. Everybody agree?
I agree.
Yeah, okay. Everybody have all, everybody have.
Thank you.
Everybody agree? Say aye.
Aye.
Anybody have votes? Okay.
So could I get that date again?
We haven't said it yet. Y'all can set that here in a minute. Okay, I just wanna go over a few things, like the items six through eight on this agenda were tabled from November meeting when we didn't have a court. So those are clearly our items, number six through eight. Um. FEMA submission. Our submissions are right now with the state, they're looking at giving us about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars back from our FEMA damage. And the purchase of that, uh, boom truck got the biggest majority of that money. So that, I'm not saying we got a check. I'm just saying it's at the state to be handled. So we've gone all the way through the federal side. It's down to state to get out of their, their, out of money. So whenever they decide to give us that money back, we'll have it. I said the fencing and the city parks done. We're not completely done with the area down there. We're gonna do the base pass. We're gonna do temporary fencing. Of course upon y'all's approval. Um. The driver's grant award, that was given to the fire department from our public entity insurance partners for backup cameras. So they got, was it a four hundred dollar grant? Yes, sir. It was a four hundred dollar grant that paid for all the backup cameras and all the fire trucks. Two fi, two fire trucks? Alright, um. Now the next one's the guidance on RFQ project outline, okay? Stop. There's, a lot of that's on y'all. Where, request for proposals is on y'all. Y'all have to tell them what project you want, where you want it, what you want in it. And then it has to be sent to the thing, the architect or whoever. You send that back to us. Like I was trying to say.
This is the handout, the thing out to.
They got that handout? I didn't know if you put that back in there. But professional services, we're not required to use, uh, RFQ in that particular. We don't have to submit it out. We don't have to use it, anything. We've used the agent air firm that we've been with for, what, six years, seven years. And their architects, they designed that building. So, I mean, if you wanna go through the process and interview a bunch of architects, that's on, that's up to you six. I think that's up in design.
Up in design has been doing governmental work for years and they're very, very good, very, very competent people. And you don't have to, like he says, you don't have to go through an RFQs to continue to use them if you should choose to do so.
Now is that a challenge to, for them to come and talk to us and do all that?
No, they already, they already.
That's a dumb business.
Yeah, that's true.
Here, here's what happened. You weren't here, but the last budget, they budgeted one point five million dollars for city hall. So we started moving forward with the project. The first thing is to get a building designed. We're, this is what we want. We went bare bones. There's nothing in that thing that's over the top. I mean, it's not, nothing, it's the cheapest, I said, I want the cheapest building, the best building you can build.
Well, you actually did better. You asked them to look at this building first.
Yeah, and they, they said they wouldn't even touch this. They, this company wouldn't touch fixing this building. But anyway, they drew that up. That was within the budget. Then we found the land. Okay? We put a contract in there. It's, this is all budgeted stuff. The council voted not to get it. Okay, that's off the table now. Now we need to either decide if we're gonna scrap all that and move forward. Or we're going to, if you like that design, find a place to put that building. Or what, it's up to you, you six now. It's all in your court now. Everything that's done in the past is behind us.
And how much was that building?
Three point two million.
And who designed that?
Upwind. They're a company out of Crossville and they've been in business for, I don't know, my whole life at least. And they've done lots of schools. They've done lots of other government buildings around. Our firm represents lots of municipalities around the area. And, um, they're very, very good, very, very competent architect and people. And they're very professional extremely. I couldn't say enough nice things about them. There are other people that do it. There are competitors, but they're very good and I don't. I, I just saw their name on there just as I looked at it right now. I didn't know who did that work for you guys, but they're, I can't tell you how good they are.
And I've got the actual blueprints on a thing in my office. Y'all are welcome to walk in there and look at it, tear it apart. Well, not tear it apart, but just take it apart and look at it. Okay.
But, but this is paid for. We've already paid for it.
Yes, we've already invested in the architect to do that, yes. Cause it was, it was budgeted the item and then they said move forward, we moved forward and then they said stop, so we stopped.
We have three point two million budgeted for.
No, no. We had one point five million budgeted. Well, see, it, a lot of that has to be preliminary stuff, such as like architect's design and.
Land.
Land acquisitions and stuff like that. And, I mean, it's there. It's in the budget right now as we speak.
Well, we. It's now budgeted at three point five million.
Yes, we rebudgeted. We rebudgeted. Now we have three point five million dollars budgeted for this project.
So three point five is in there to do a new city hall?
It's budgeted, yes.
Okay. And that's gonna cost three point two million, so.
Well, that's, that's if we buy that land. We gotta buy land to put that on.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
But this is just a building. The three point two million is just for the building.
And the land itself was at three?
But that was included in their total price, was it not?
No, that was, that was separate. They don't do land deals. They, they say, you show me the land, I'll put the building.
Okay.
Yeah, it was.
It's one thing.
What about where the old water treatment plant was behind the radio station? Do we own it?
Back, back there, yeah. It doesn't go, I don't know how far back it goes, but we own that back there.
Well, that's at least out of the flood zone.
Well, so is the other property.
Yeah, too much ifs on that one, in my opinion.
What?
Too much ifs on that one.
No, there's not. You were given a bunch of ifs, but there's not that many ifs. But anyway.
Well, I'll copy.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Well, I mean, we can check in any, you tell me where you want me to check. I'll check.
Check with the, how the water plant?
Check that out, yeah. That'd be good. For our workshop.
Y'all wanna speak on that, Rusty?
You're, you're talking about to the side or off, were you?
Behind.
Okay, you, if you see the fence at the water plant, the city, if you look at the, uh, the property lines, the city only owns maybe. Somewhere in the neighborhood of ten to twenty feet from that fence. And, and city hall's gonna take a considerable amount of space.
Hmm.
So.
It's gonna, yeah, it takes anywhere between two and a half acres.
I don't know if y'all are familiar with, at all, but we don't have, I mean, any side, anywhere inside that fence, you couldn't, you couldn't build. Because of piping and drainage and water lines and, and anything outside the fence, we don't own enough land.
Is there any, like, over, going on the bypass there where you go down to the landfill, is there any property there that we could? Maybe buy from the county or own any there?
Uh, was it the Kemp, Kemp brothers?
Yeah.
Ted Kemp owns both sides, don't he?
We've, we've talked to him. He's thinking about selling a couple acres, but I haven't moved forward with anything until you tell me what you want me to do.
Check on that.
Check on price. How many you want? Two? I, I say we get three acres to make it's acre.
Cause you gotta have parking.
And the engineer said it was over two acres.
Yeah, it's two points something. I don't wanna try and buy two point six five acres for somebody. So three acres from the camps. Y'all good with going ahead on that?
Yes, getting the price.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not gonna buy it.
Thank you.
I could buy it, it's in the budget.
That building, that new building?
No.
What is the?
The, all that building down there, the, right behind city hall, right beside it.
The new one?
Yeah. I mean, they could still use that.
Yeah, we still.
Yeah, we're not getting rid of that. We're not getting, this is just gonna be the offices. This is gonna be administration. It's not gonna be public works. That, that building right there is just for the police department and all the city offices. It's not, not, public works is gonna stay here, cause we just built that, that bragging building. And the good thing about that is if we can, we can use these bays. We're getting ready to bring in a bunch of pipe, cause we're fixing to do a mile long water line on Smotherman Avenue. So we need a place to store the pipe too. And I know y'all seen the plans, but building, another building right next to this one, it'll, it'll, it'll never work. Because you can't get a truck in here. You can't get the equipment into work and all that stuff.
Is there any, maybe, can you see if there's any other land available in, around the bypass, anything like that?
What we can do is, I did it last time. I put an ad in the paper saying, I'm looking for land. And if we had one person to have found some land.
Oh.
A lot of people do is not get the cartridge crew here.
Well, you could put it on the web.
I'm gonna put it on our website, a little bit everywhere. I mean, it's just, I mean, I, a lot of people aren't gonna just come up and say, yeah, I got three acres of land to sell. But land in our town, you know, is scarce. I mean, it's, and it's at a premium. It's not cheap.
Especially if you don't own a boat farm.
And it's been, any idea with the flood plain? So, I mean, I've got offered quite a bit of land in flood plain, but I mean, that, that's right in it. It's not just the edge of the driveway. It's the whole shoot match.
Well, we don't have, we can't expand. I mean, we're just stuck in this little hole. We can't expand. We've only got a perimeter.
There's ways we can expand, but it's not, not good ways. You can.
But it'd go, it'd go into county though, wouldn't it?
Yeah, we could annex stuff, but it's, it's, I guess it's a whole different ballgame. So we'll finish this conversation up when we get to the workshop. But I've got some ideas. I'll try and have that stuff. So you want the three acres on the Kemp property price and the Moss Building? What do you want the price on it?
That Moss Building is gonna be worse trying to rehab than this one.
Possibly, but we don't know. Just want some options, but yeah, I mean.
Uh, we've been in it.
Okay.
You can put this building, I mean, it's got all the storage space you need, but the offices are horrendous.
Yeah.
But, but I mean, I can check it. It may, it may be cheaper to do it that way. Buy that and renovate that. I don't know. So price on Moss Building, price on land, anything else, y'all can check before next month.
Start with those two.
You're supposed to. Okay.
So what about the old fairgrounds? I know the Gregory family owns it now. Man, that'd be nice.
I never thought about approaching them, but I'm not sure that, uh, I'd wanna put our city hall right next to the stop bar.
He still owns it. They have an option, I think, uh, than you owners.
I thought Gregory still owned.
They do own it. They own all that area, but that, they got an option to buy.
You have it right by the stop bar and plus it's off the beaten path and people trying to find it. I mean, that's why I, I would like to find something on the bypass. So where it's out where city hall should be instead of on back road. And make it easier for our customer to get to and have a drive-through where they can pay the bills.
We'll put a thinking cap on.
Well.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It has to be.
We can check it out.
It has to be a six-person project. It's not. Okay. We got a way off the weekend half a month.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, next thing is gonna be trash pickup. If you'll let all your, anyone that has questions, let them know that all trash will be picked up on December twenty-sixth.
All that whole month?
That, that'll be this, that week.
That week.
Cause it's, uh, Christmas is on Wednesday, so they're gonna get everything on Thursday. Now they said it's gonna be here later in the day. But I also have our street truck planned to run that day too, cause I know there's gonna be a lot of trash out there after Christmas. So we got our field truck running right with it.
That week, okay.
Alright. Next item on the agenda is gonna be our auditor, Mr. John Poole. He's going to give us a summary of the audit he did of our finances.
Mayor, permission, I have copies of the audit. May I pass those out to this board?
Heck yeah.
Would you go half and I'll? Alright, very good.
We'll pass them now.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyway, I got it next.
The same object.
Uh, just, just a minute. My name is John Poole. I'm a CPA hired to perform the, uh, annual, the state required annual audit. That end, that, that, uh, the city's year end is June thirtieth, and so this report is, uh, ending as of June. Could I have you guys turn to page nineteen? And I know you've been overwhelmed with information and I apologize, cause I'm gonna give you some more, but. Uh, I, I know we've got some new council members, and so I kinda wanna go into just a little bit more detail. And needless to say, if, if I say something that you have a question about, I, I hope that it's okay for them to ask. Great. I wanna make sure follow those. Okay. Uh, um, in doing an audit, we're really trying to do three things. One, make sure that we provide the state in the state's oversight capacity. The finan, financial information that they require. Truth of the matter is, Scott and the, the staff does a terrific job of that. So we as auditors don't have to spend a lot of time, uh, in doing that. We obviously verify it, but we don't have to do it. So. But I certainly think this report contains everything that the state, state would require. Uh, and so what we, where we spend our time and what we think is important to this board is really two things. One, looking to make sure, in our opinion, that, that the town is getting the monies that it should be getting. Whether that's from the annual property tax, whether that's from the monthly utility billings, whether that's the monthly sales tax monies from the county. Or the, the sales tax and gasoline taxes from the state. And then all the other kinda miscellaneous police fines, park revenues, interest, we're gonna talk about a little bit. Just trying to make sure that we're getting the monies we're supposed to. In my opinion, I think we are. Uh, when you have as many property owners, you're gonna have some folks that are delinquent, but we do a good job here at city hall. Of, of tracking those delinquencies and turning those over to the county, uh, so that, uh, we'll ultimately, hopefully get collection. And then the same thing with, uh, your utilities, making sure, because you know, we're gonna have some folks from time to time that don't pay. Making sure that we, the town are kind of enforcing our cutoff policies and, and, and once again, but certainly in my opinion, I think we're getting the monies we're supposed to. One of the things I know for sure is that once that money's getting here to city hall, that the employees are handling that money appropriately. And we're getting those to our financial institution as, uh, our city policy and, and state regulations require. So I certainly believe that we're getting the monies that we think we need to. We're gonna talk about those here in a second. And then the third thing, the thing that we as, uh, that myself as an auditor think is most important is, we spend a lot of time. Looking, uh, at the monies that this board, uh, approves through the annual budget, to the department heads. Making sure that, first of all, we're spending that money on city business. It's a pretty important statement, especially, uh, recently. Uh, just looking to make sure that we are, you know, once again, spending on city business, making sure that we're following our rules and regulations. Related to purchasing, bidding when appropriate. Uh, the, the city has been fortunate enough to be involved in lots of grants, making sure we're following those grant agreements. When it comes to the spending of the monies. And I'm very happy to be able to report that we just didn't run across anything. Uh, that gave us any concern on the way that the city's monies are being spent. Uh, so terrific. Now let me just talk through numbers. And the first thing I wanna say, and I apologize for this, is city finances are very complicated. They just are. Uh, and so let me kinda go through this, uh, uh, as best I can. Uh, and once again, feel free to ask questions. This board not, may not be aware, but the state requires the city to keep its money in different, we call them funds, different sets of books. So you have a utility fund. That utility fund for our purposes is the water and sewer fund. And there's some very unusual rules as it relates to this water and sewer fund. First of all, the water and sewer fund doesn't use government accounting. It uses full business accounting, just like if we were a private business. There is a law that says that your utility operations, the water and sewer combined, has to be profitable at least every other year. That's gonna be the biggest concern as it relates to finances for this board, because that's a tough thing to do. Uh, you have to bring in at least one dollar more than you spend at least every other year. You can't lose money two years in a row. And that's what that page nineteen, uh, is gonna, is gonna tell us here. Uh, as you go through that page nineteen, this is just for that water and sewer fund. You got revenues at the top, some expenses there in the middle. Some what they call non-operating, of which interest income is significant. But the third line from the bottom. The, the line that says fancy wording, net change and net position, that just says profit or loss. And you can see, it's a very positive number. Three hundred nine thousand dollars. Terrific. We've met the state threshold. We, we earned that more than one dollar profit. Uh, which is terrific. And that's what you, that's what you wanna see and. And you can see, it's a very positive number, three hundred and nine thousand dollars, terrific, we've met the state threshold, we, we earned that more than one dollar of profit, uh, which is terrific, and that's what you, that's what you wanna see, and that's what you hope for. Um, one of the biggest problems that you have with this utility fund, uh, is something called depreciation. Uh, if you look up in those expenses, uh, that's the last number, depreciation for any of you guys that run businesses, you're familiar with depreciation, and in your business, depreciation is a good thing, it's a terrible thing when it relates to government. It means you have to bring in additional monies, more than what you just spend out normally, but once again, even with a three hundred thousand dollar depreciation charge, which goes against us, we still had a surplus of three hundred thousand dollars for the year, so that's great. Uh, let me have you flip one page previous to page eighteen. On that page nineteen, like I said, that's the page the state's gonna look at first, that shows monies coming in and out, we've met the, the threshold, terrific. On page eighteen is, is what we call, uh, what we, uh, what the town's utility system, what it owns and what it owes, and I just really wanna focus that top line, at the end of June, two point four million dollars in the bank, great. Uh, and then I just wanna point out, one, if you'll go about three-fourths down the page, uh, there is another line that says debt, one point five, we have basically a little bit over one point five billion dollars' worth of debt that has to be paid by the water and sewer fund. For a utility system your size, that is a, one point five million dollars is significant to me, but it is a tiny number as it relates to a town with as many customers and as much as water and sewer that you guys process, so, overall, the, the water and sewer system, from a financial standpoint, I believe to be very strong. But we're always gonna have that challenge of, we gotta make a profit, and so when things like inflation that hit two years ago happens, this board has to address that, because if it costs us more, we gotta bring in, okay. But once again, for the year ending two, twenty-four.
May I add to that, Mr. Poole, in part of the requirement of making those profits, if you don't make the profit, if they're not self-sustainable, the state will come in and take over your utilities, and so it's really, really important, like Mr. Poole says, to, to keep this strong position, and I'm, didn't know these numbers, and I'm impressed with them. But where you also get into trouble is not just inflation, but if you have repairs, and I'm hearing about your forty-six-year-old sewer plant, and I'm hearing about, seeing these pipes, those kinds of things will hit you all at once, and you've still gotta make that profit, and the state will come in and take over your utilities, so you gotta stick with it.
That, that they would take over the district only if we, the town, didn't take action.
That's right.
But this town has always been very proactive, and once again, what he said is exactly correct, that's right, yeah, yeah, and that, exactly right, what they'll say is, "Hey, guys, you gotta do something, figure out a way to reduce expenses," I don't know, you can, but it's usually very rough, but anyways, perfect, uh, thank you for that comment, uh, excellent there, okay.
Scott, did you have something you wanted to?
Just indicate, they look at two factors, the operating income is, that is, that's the primary one, and then the change in capital, change in net position is the other, we have to have a positive operating income on those two-year things as well.
So, even if we had ten million dollars in the bank, believe it or not, if we lost two dollars one year and three dollars the next year, they would, they would want us to, so, it doesn't even matter how much money you have in the bank, but anyways, making sure the water and sewer is profitable is, if I was on this board, is the one thing I would be most concerned about, once again, two thousand and four is very good. Uh, let me have you turn to page sixteen, and I will pick up the pace now, um, and talk about all the money that the town, uh, that you guys are responsible for, that are not utility funds, and these are a little differently, uh, in that they're not full business accounting, things are done a little differently, so as I talk about things, you may go, "Well, that's not how I do it in my business," you're exactly right. And, there is not the state law about being profitable, in other words, in these non-utility funds, if you spend more money than you take in for a year, or two years, or three years, it's okay, as long as you still have a dollar in the bank. Once again, that's not an issue here at the town, and we're gonna talk about some of those numbers, because it was a interesting year for the town last year, so, uh, what you have on that page sixteen are the five, the four different non-utility funds. The biggest one, which is the, the, the monies we're all familiar with, that's the, what we call the general fund, and that's where the property taxes come in, and the sales tax, uh, comes in, it's the monies that we use to play for, pay for police, and fire, and parks, and those kinda things. And once again, up at the top, and there are details about these amounts here, starting on page twenty-one, if you wanna see what makes them up, but you can see for the general fund, revenue's almost four million dollars, go look at expenses, and it's four point eight million dollars during the year. And so, the number below that, that fancy language, but you can see the number has parentheses, during the year, we spent nine hundred thousand dollars more than we took in, but, it's a big but. If you'll notice, there is something, uh, uh, right up above that number that's in parentheses, there are all those things under the caption capital outlay, those are kinda one-time expenditures. During the year, we bought significant equipment, we made significant investments in our streets, you can see, we almost spent nine hundred thousand dollars on the streets, you're not gonna have these expenses every year. You take away some of the big things, once again, that were, uh, you know, budgeted by the board, and, and certainly, we would've had a surplus, the last two years, if I were to go and look, I think the surpluses were over a million dollar in each of the two years, that's why you guys had the money to do what you did without borrowing, and that is such an important term, okay. So, you, you can see there, once again, a lot of expenditures, but once again, plenty of reserves, so we were able to do it, we're gonna talk a little bit of that in a minute. And then you've got some other funds, here, drug funds, the police department has a special, uh, set of monies that can only be used for police investigations and those kinda things. We have a sanitation fund, that sounds like a, a utility, but it's not, it operates just like one, but the state doesn't consider it one, so we don't have to worry about profit or loss, and then that last column, state street aid fund, we get some.
Uh, that we, the city owns and owes, balance sheet, and that top line, just look at the general fund, at the end of June, five million dollars, you know, five million dollars, if I were to go back and look at page sixteen, don't, that was more than the whole budget for last year, in a year where we really spent some things. And so, once again, I'm gonna say this, these are my words, you might be able to see it hot without borrowing any money, but, you know, that's, that's just me, but anyway, that's right, I see that, I understand, hey, I understand that, I understand that, I understand that, my words, no one else, that's right, that's right. Uh, but, yeah, so, once again, from a, a general fund, having what we call reserves, or monies to do the things you wanna do in the future, you're well funded, so you're, you're gonna have the ability to do so, without having to go ask Mr. Banker for permission to do it. And then you can see the other, uh, bank accounts there at the top, one of the nice things about all these monies there, um, I'm just gonna double-check something, uh, sorry, Mayor, I know I've gone way too long. No, 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 I, I, that's my apologies, my apologies.
No, they need, they need to hear this, this is the first time they've heard it.
Yeah, uh, one of the nice things about the monies that are on this page, there are no debts attached to that, no debts, the town, besides its utility fund, has no debts. Once again, by City Hall, okay, but anyways, that, that, that's it, so just to say, once again, that, uh, the, the finances, you know, you guys are gonna have a lot of important decisions, but luckily, you're gonna have the ability, uh, to do those, uh, do the things that you need to do. Uh, I do just wanna mention something, my name and phone number is on page one of this report, if ever a member of this board or a citizen can call me at any time, uh, you, they can email me, Scott has my email, um, this report, of course, will be on the, the state's website, uh, now that you guys have had a chance to look at that. And so, Mayor, I'm gonna ask, I know you've been given a lot of information, anything that you would like to add?
I would like you to go over one thing for me, the amount of excess equipment we sold, the money we made from that, and the interest that we did, made by moving our monies around.
Good point, good point, uh, if I could have you turn to page, I apologize, page clean one. That is something, that is an oversight on my behalf, and, once again, I'm gonna get to say kudos to my good, to, uh, Scott over there. Uh, on the page twenty-one, these are all the revenues from the general fund, what I wanna have you do is go down to that last section that says miscellaneous, and look at the number that says interest income. In other words, for interest income, it's free money, that's just me, you can see, we budgeted about thirty thousand, two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars in interest income, just from the monies that were in the general fund. I can tell you, as little as three or four years ago, the city was not proactive in earning, generating, uh, interest on its funds, don't know why, that's just one of the things that, and it took a while to actually, two hundred and sixty, just from the general fund, don't flip over there, but if you were to go to page nineteen, the utility fund, over a hundred and ten thousand dollars in interest income, once again, to me, I'm just gonna use the word free money. So, we highly commend, uh, the, 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 the town, and once again, these are safe investments, no, I mean, this is money in a state savings account, basically is what it is, so there's no risk, there's no loss of principal, those kinda things, and so that's terrific. And then, yes, during the year, uh, the town, uh, you know, examined its equipment, uh, and, and sold that, and so, once again, any times you can do that, you know, that's, once again, actions worthy of taking, of course, it takes, uh, acts from this board for them to be able to sell these, and you have to leave a surplus, I don't want anyone to think that they, Mayor can just sell, he certainly can't, but, alright, so, I've taken enough time, any questions? That was a very good question, and that was just an oversight on my behalf, I will say, this was a very easy audit to do, the experience and the, the knowledge of the folks in the office, terrific, that's why, uh, you guys are in such good shape.
Thank you.
Yes, sorry, go so long. Most of the germ?
No. We haven't even, we haven't even gotten into the real agenda yet. Let's take a recess of, how many minutes do y'all want?
You want ten?
Ten-minute recess, is that everybody good with that? Does everybody know, can I use the bathroom, does everybody know where the bathrooms are?
Ten.
Alright.
I'll show you.
I'll show you.
All the rest of them are otherwise. This group has asked me before, we need fifty more volunteers, why don't you put them up? Be happy to. You find me fixed people willing to come and fight a fire for nothing. Then, you spend about ten thousand dollars so I can train them. Then, you spend about five thousand dollars, seven thousand dollars every ten years to equip them. And you spend about another ninety-seven, ninety-six, seven hundred, that's what we just paid for last S C B A. Breeding, our backs. S C B A, seven hundred and bringing up rates. And when you add all that up, you'd be better off hiring people than you would equip the net being volunteers. It would cost you more. The National Volunteer Fire Council saves the higher volunteer fire department saves this town between two point five and three million dollars a year. Yes, we spend money. We don't make a dime for the city as far as making money. But this past year, we saved ninety-six percent of what we've responded. That's ninety-six percent of people who are still in their homes, still able to live there, businesses that are still living, and still on the tax books. So even though we don't make you money, hopefully we save you money. Uh, this year so far, I'll put my glasses on and say this. We've run two hundred and forty-five calls, sixty-two percent of those were medical. Last year, we had two hundred and thirty-three, and twenty-twenty-two, three hundred and twenty-seven callers. And two thousand twenty-one, two hundred and fifty-nine. And I'll put that into perspective for you. Two thousand four, we ran fifty-three emergency calls. So we're five to six times easier now. Same number of volunteers, you didn't pay me, so I get to make the majority of those. Four-minute average from turnout to having apparatus in the scene is a huge thing. And while it's true that we have fewer fires now, they burn hotter and they burn faster. And we do just about anything that Chief Davis's department doesn't do, or what he's over here doesn't do. If you have a problem, you call us, we try to mitigate that situation. And it doesn't matter if it's fire, medical, rape, hazmat, we have to handle all of them. Very true, we don't have a number of fires that we used to have. But if it's your house, or your house, or your house, or your medicine, don't you want the best one that you've had down here? I only had something more. I've experienced a fire. That was in that ten seventy-seven, and I thought I'd lost my mind. And it was scary thing. I'm your only employee, the rest of them are paid-on-call volunteers. If y'all want their names, I've got them. If not, let me give my officers anyway. Deputy Chief is Jeremy Dennis, I have two captains. There's one, Derek Root, Matt White's the other. I have two lieutenants, Ethan Cook, Owen Donnell. Our chief engineer is Travis Refter, he's responsible to make sure the apparatus is where it needs to be. Chaplain is Kerry Doogie. Uh, we have a past chief, Phil Putch, served as chief for two years. And then, uh, my son serves as attorney. He's a career employee at Boston Emergency. I wish y'all would come down sometime and spend some time with me and let me explain what most... I could spend a lot of hours with y'all and explain why we do things the way we do, why we need things from this group and y'all being good to us. I won't deny that. This mayor and, and the previous council have been big to us, they've provided everything we need. With that being said, I don't ask you for anything, I just want. I would like to know, and I've been this, whenever mayors come in and put in this one, if I come to him and say, "I want this," it's okay for him to tell me no. If I come in and say, "I need this," I would hope that he would say, "Let me figure out how we're gonna pay for it." But if I walk in and say, "I have to have this," I hope y'all trust me enough to know that I have to do it. That's what we need from this group, is, is financial support, mortgage support. I'm done, unless y'all have something else to make. If you do, you can ask, or please do come see me. I give you, I give you my name, my number, whatever you want. The door is locked, and all that came about after nine eleven, we've seen it unlocked. But that's a secure facility. This portion of this building is a secure facility. Water and sewer has to be secured after nine eleven. I know y'all talking about that property up there, you know, how to fix it, fix the treatment panel, whatever else you do, because it is a secure facility.
Federal mandate.
Federal mandate, and a lot of things that y'all will learn, I would, I think you will. Uh, I've been around a long time, I'm not the brightest bulb in the lamp, but I love what I do. I love to help people, and if you get into this line of work, I think that's what you have to do to be successful. Uh, come see me, ask me your questions, and it's right in my hands. Not to yell at me.
Alright, thanks Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. Scott?
Okay, each of you have a financial report that I give to you every month. First thing you stand later here. It also has my card on it. Have I got that? Okay. So what I try to give you is all the detail, okay? It would be near impossible for you to generate questions getting it tonight, okay? So I would encourage you, if you find something on this financial report that you wanna ask about, by all means do so, but also ask about it next month, okay? When you've had time to do it. What I also try to do is to put this in an executive summary for you. And, uh, it's key financial, first off, talk about the key financial metrics. And this is what I'm trying to say, summarize so you have the big picture and you got the full detail. And at November thirtieth, we had four million nine hundred and sixty-four thousand five hundred and twenty-three dollars in general fund, okay? Street aid cash, it's two hundred and forty-four thousand five sixty. What is that for? We can use that when we start paving the streets. Uh, that plus what's in the general fund, you know, we'll be able to pave. Every street we can ever get done with water and sewer lines, we'll be able to pave, okay? Water and sewer fund cash, at November thirtieth, two million five hundred and eighty-seven thousand one hundred and forty-six dollars. Our debt at November thirtieth, one million six hundred and forty-four thousand five sixty-five, okay? Now, the next figure is an important thing. It's annualized regulatory water and sewer fund operating profit. Mr. Poole emphasized the net position. That has to be positive for the water and sewer fund. But we also have to have a positive operating income, okay? And that's where, in the year before, we had a eight-thousand-dollar loss. That's why we had to make the increase in rates, but it wasn't enough, okay? Uh, so that'll be something you need to think about. My task is to give you information. What you do with it is up to you, okay?
Scott, can you explain this, what this state revolving fund loan debt is with the, I guess that's water and sewer?
Yeah, that's a good question. The state gets money from the federal government, okay? And the T D E C, Department of Environment and Conservation, they administer it, okay? And everybody across the state of Tennessee knows that the snake in the grass is water and sewer lines. Just about every municipality in the state has lines like those over there, okay? Um, and so what they try to do is they count this, the state revolving fund loan. And what they do is you apply for funds, okay? And they determine, number one, are you, do you have a real need, which they know they do, we do. And then they determine, are you financially able to service the money that you're asking for, okay? Uh, and then, a year or eighteen months later, you get a loan, okay? But it's, you have to spend the money first, then they reimburse us, okay? Then, for state revolving fund, fund loans, for clean water, the most they will forgive, will they make a loan of a hundred dollars? If it's a clean water loan, depending on your, uh, a lot of different factors, including the poverty levels and all that, they determine how much they can forgive. So if we got a hundred-dollar loan for clean water, presently, we qualify for twenty percent forgiveness. So if we got, they give us a hundred dollars, and it gets booked as a hundred-dollar loan, and then they make a forgiveness, twenty thousand dollars, so we are only paying back eighty dollars, okay? Drinking water, it's more of a priority for the state, because it's all needed. You can depend on how much money, and what kind of poverty levels you have in the town, you can get as much as a fifty percent revolving loan, okay? But you still have to qualify for whatever you're asking, and you still have to be able to pay it back. So you could ask for a hundred million dollars, but that doesn't mean you're gonna get through the process and be approved for, okay? So, it's loan money, and it is good loan money, but it takes a long time to get it, okay? Because the state's really behind on it. Talk to our engineers, we're not alone in that. But you also, whenever you put in those loan requests, it has to be something that means something to your finances. You didn't ask for the loan, but that don't mean you're gonna get it, okay?
Okay.
Um, and they also put you on a priority ranking list.
And it's a long process. I mean, there's a lot of paperwork and things that go into it on our end of...
Yeah, we started this, what, we started last year?
Twenty twenty-three, we started getting clean water, uh, two point five million dollars, okay? Uh, because we take our existing debt plus the two point five that we asked for, and then, uh, decided on the drinking water, it, it matches our debt policy, okay? So that's how it's maxed out. So you could ask for a hundred million dollars, but that don't mean you're gonna get it, okay? And you might get through the priority ranking list, but there is a step that goes through, and we just went through this, prior council saw it. Controller does a financial sufficiency review, and they say, "Well, you don't, you don't, you can't qualify for this loan," okay? And you have to say, "Hey, voted, hey, in the next five years, we will make a increase in our rates so that we can get this clean water."
But is that real money spent, or is that what we've got proposed, or?
Well, that's real money that's already spent.
But, but is there some money that, like matching money that's gonna... Okay, so that's just, the money's already came?
Yeah, okay, that's it. You can apply for these loans, and we do, okay? But you can apply for a hundred million dollars, but that don't mean you're gonna go through the process, okay? Uh, and that's been part of the misunderstanding. Because we just applied for two and a half million dollars, okay, in twenty twenty-three, and two, three months ago, we had to do a resolution to say, "Yes, Controller, yes, T D E C, we will, between the next five years, we will raise our rates from two to six percent somewhere in there." Otherwise, they said, "You ain't, you don't get the money." There is no free money, okay? There's just not. If it was out there, believe me, I'd be going out, okay? But S R Fs are a good deal, depending on the circumstances. And we'll get into some of that later with the drinking water and what we're trying to do with Derek's staff and so forth.
Thank you.
Okay. Annualized operating profit. All it means is, I figure out the profit to date, and then I, if I had twelve months, this is where it'd be wound up. Now, I said, "Wow, that's a whole lot of money," okay? Yes, it appears that way. We're fixing to get done with Hall Avenue, and it'll probably wind up being about a hundred thousand dollars, okay? So that has to go on that depreciation schedule, and that decreases our operating profit. And we're, our plan, our capital project plan is for five years. And we're looking to put in billions of dollars of drinking water and sewer lines, okay? And that doesn't even address the drinking water plant or the sewer plant. So we got a big project for that, we'll see. So the depreciation is coming, so we planned out five years, this is what's gonna happen. If we are able to get those lines done like we wanted to. If we put in the sewer lines to save forty-five percent of wasted water that we're having to process from inflow and infiltration. So there's been a whole lot of work, a whole lot of people, to plan out what we're doing, including the finances, okay? As far as that part. General fund cash ratio, these are three ratios, uh, I did research on, found out these are the best ones for a municipality to kind of determine where you're at. General fund, it's a hundred and six to one, means we're very solid. That means we can pay off the money we owe a hundred and six times before we'd run out of money, okay? Water sewer fund, fifteen to one, okay? We're in pretty good shape there, okay? Water sewer fund debt service ratio, okay? That means, can we pay the debt that we have? If we ever get to a one to one, it's a problem. That's why I've said our goal at one point five, I don't want us to have to worry. I don't have to go home at night and worry about making payroll. Um, so I operate conservatively, and this is what we put into place. So right now, we can pay our debt five point time, five point two to one. It's good, it's not as good as it used to be, but it is what it is, okay? Alright, the audited financial statements, you've already heard that, you've got those, you did pour over those, and I would emphasize to you, legally, this board has fiscal responsibility for the audit report, okay? You and the mayor. You guys have the fiscal responsibility for the audit report. So please pay attention to it, and be thankful you're in good shape. Hasn't always been that way. Alright, item number four, we're gonna talk about more about, but I just want to, this is a decision point. Um, we're gonna go make that decision now, um, when the mayor gets ready. But what Steve has presented about the tank going in the river, um, we don't have to deal with EPA and not being able to process sewage, okay? This has been a hard one, uh, but we're at a decision point now with the Corps of Engineers. Um, our share of this project altogether is gonna be seven hundred and sixty-four thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, okay? South Carthage, we have an agreement with them, because we process their sewage. Our contract with them says they can reimburse us up to a hundred thousand dollars, okay, for whatever we, what we spend.
Capital projects.
For capital projects. They pay us, just like any other customer, uh, each month based on the contract. But right now, the Corps of Engineers, and you have this letter, it's in the handouts that you've got, they're wanting us to pay the design fees of a hundred and twenty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, okay? And you have their letter, so you know it's not coming up for that. They can't do anything else on this project until we pay them a hundred and twenty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, okay? So you have to make a decision. Your options are, hey, we're gonna do this project, and we'll pay the seven sixty-four from our cash reserves. That's one option. I'm just gonna give you the options, and I'll let you talk about it, and then you can ask my opinion. We can borrow the funds from Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund or other lender, and we'll get into the detail of that later. One-time transfer from general fund to water and sewer fund. You can apply to the comptroller's division for case-by-case decision. But that discussion is, do you want to use that now with this project? What happens, I'm just not certain if that's the best way to go, but it might fly, okay? But they don't wanna do it, and you'll see, when you read those email, that stream, you'll see how bad they don't wanna do it, okay? An option four is just continue the project. But we will need a resolution, uh, that can report to, uh, to the Corps of Engineers for financing the project, or something to say that we're not gonna do it. They want money in decent, a hundred and twenty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. In the discussions, if there's questions, then we can go from there. The last time I have there is since July one, we have been upgrading all the accounting processes, accounting softwares to a program that we're all ninety-eight percent satisfied with, okay? Uh, there's a two percent that they'll get figured out. Uh, but it gives us the capability to do a whole lot more. In the future, if you wanna line out, and want the detail of any line out along the budget, I can put it right there, okay? We have one more to be done, and that is starting, okay? And it will be starting in January. And then we'll have what I'm calling Phase One of this project complete. But there's a whole lot of other softwares available that will help every department here. But we need to get this one done first. And whether we go any further or not is not my decision, okay? I'll have some recommendations about where we start, but, um, just to let you know, this is about a hundred and twenty thousand dollar project, of which we've spent maybe fifty, something like that so far. So, that's going well, okay? My goal is to make the town of Carthage's finances a lot better than when I got here and trained the staff. We've got two certified municipal finance officers after me. I'm a CPA, I'm also a CMFO, didn't have to do that, but wanted to. Uh, but we, you have two other employees that are trained. That's the minimum state requires for the comptroller's office. So, our third employee, after she's learned a while, I'll ask her, I want you to get a training, okay? So that's my whole goal, is to make all this as seamless and as professionally accounting financed as I can do, okay? So, I'm always available to you, and I encourage you. Facebook's not the place to get information on our finances. Go to the head of the string. Office is here. You wanna know about any penny spent, I'll take you and show you exactly how it's all working, and where it's at. Is that fair?
You said that one-time transfer, is that in a year, or is that one?
That's a good question. They can't give us an answer on that.
Yeah, here's the thing, there's only one of the municipalities that's done it, okay? So I asked the same question, I want it one time, okay? Is that in a lifetime, is that in a month, is that in a fiscal year? That's a one-time ask, and each circumstance is considered at a time. So what they're trying to say is, you can ask for it once, you might get it. You might ask for it again, you may or may not get it. Uh, it's not a, they won't say, it's a once-in-a-lifetime, once-in-a-fiscal-year, once-in-forever.
They really discourage?
They don't want you to do it.
Okay.
But, I was asked a question by a citizen at the time, to do some more research, and I did it, and I've provided the prior council all the email correspondence, and you can read it for yourself. And make your own judgments there. As you said earlier, we all have opinions, okay? Everybody I've ever known has an opinion. Some may be more than others, but we all have an opinion. Collectively, we can do this, that, plus, and all that. We can do this. That's all I can say.
Scott?
Last part's not financing.
Do you feel the, uh, one-time ask, uh, for that transfer is, it's kind of risky business? Um, do you think maybe perhaps that that should be like a big emergency, something unforeseen in the future? Is that your hesitation?
That is my concern, is that if we use it now, what happens if we truly had a major, major issue?
Okay. And we're at the limit where we can't borrow any more money because we've met our threshold. We have to have the fallback emergency procedure, say, "Okay, we need six pumps for the water plant. We ain't got the money in the water sewer fund, let's ask for that emergency transfer."
So, and the other, to expand on that, yes, could I, could we write a check for the full seven sixty-four over the time of the process? Right now, yes, we could, but we're fixing to spend another, uh, seven hundred thousand over here on Smotherman, okay? And that's all cash money, and we would be down to about eight hundred thousand dollars in the water sewer fund. I don't wanna get there, okay? That, that's a lot of money, but when it comes to what we're doing, it's not. Hundred, ten thousand for pumps that we've got out, it's a balancing. Nobody wants to consider rate increases at all, we don't. Trust me, I didn't want to consider it, but it's my responsibility to recommend. We did thirty-three percent. My recommendation is, whenever you get to considering those things, do it a little bit at a time, okay? And it's not gonna hit people as difficult. But if we hadn't have done that, we would have had a loss this year, okay? Operating loss. And we would be the safe, Tennessee Utility District, they would be coming in, and they'd be setting our rates.
And they were talking about seventy percent?
Yeah, that has happened in some municipalities. But it's a hard thing to run a business with elected officials. It's the reality of it, it's just the reality.
On the part with South Carthage, is it just said that they're only gonna pay a hundred thousand on this?
That is the negotiated contract.
Because they're, if they go highs, I mean...
They can't go, they can't afford it.
They can't even probably pay a hundred thousand, but...
There's no, they're not even close.
But we do all of their...
They pay a monthly bill.
They pay a month?
Pay a monthly bill. And actually, we've increased it too, because they have I N I, so we had put a provision in there, they had to pay so much for the I N I too, wasn't in there before.
We were losing money processing their sewage.
And we updated it.
We negotiated the contract to get a fifteen percent I N I, okay? As part of that negotiation, we lowered the contract from ten years to five years, and we said, "Okay, where the prior contract said you would pay us thirty percent of any capital expenditures, which we would not have been able to afford, camp it at a hundred thousand, which is still a stretch for... And I'll say this, I still say, the county needs to take the lead on the sewage issues for all the municipalities, and the county's the only one that can make that happen." So, I gotta say that. To you, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, option two, I would assume the Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund, if we borrow from it, it's similar to, like a bank interest.
Uh, Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund simply manages the money. I've already talked to the bankers and asked them to contact them, so that if we approach that way, then our local banks will work through the Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund. They handle the details and all that. But the actual loan would come from an individual bank. Uh, and they can do this, there's a long history here on this one, but in any case, their, their name is a little bit misleading. I won't get into why, but just understand, they've got the federal and, and state documents that they can do this for municipalities. So it benefits us to use them rather than going out to just a bank and saying, "Hey, we need six dollars." They handle all the stuff behind the seamless, okay?
But as far as the rate, similar to a bank?
It would be a bank's rate.
The bank was at the rate?
Yeah, so we'll, if we go this route, we may have three, uh, banks, four banks, ten banks, I don't know. Say, "Hey, we're loaning money for this at this rate with amortization schedule." And we will, you guys will decide which one you wanna do. So, it's not a one-and-done, it's a, it's a collaborative decision process. There's a lot of benefits to going through this process, through Tennessee Municipal Fund.
Well, I don't, I don't wanna waste a bunch of time, but can you tell me like, a benefit? What is the benefit, if it's the same rate?
Uh, it'll be a little bit more, they get some percentage, okay? But they handle all the details of setting it up and all. It's a good question, I don't have it around to pop away yet, I've got it, I got all the details. Uh, and I'll put it in an email and send it to all of you, so you can read it, okay? If I don't know the answer, I will tell you, but I will get you the answer. Good question. Others?
Can you tell us what you would recommend, um, between option one and two, to pay it? Would we pay the one twenty-four? I mean, is that gonna hurt us? That's for the total.
The one twenty-four, we're gonna, I'm gonna recommend we pay it.
Rather than borrow?
Rather than borrow, but the rest of it, the six hundred, whatever that's left of the seven sixty-four?
Oh, okay.
My recommendation is, we, um...
Borrow?
Borrow from Tennessee Municipal Fund.
Okay.
But you can make that decision. If you can get local banks to work with us outside the Tennessee Municipal Fund, uh, let's go for it.
But we'll take the money where we get it. So, but now that one twenty-four number, one hundred and twenty-four thousand nine fifty, is in the seven...
is in the seven sixty-four one fifty?
That's correct.
So, really, we gotta make a decision tonight on one twenty-four nine fifty?
Yeah. But once you spend it, I don't think the federal government, at least the Internal Revenue Service, who I have the most experience with, they're not very fond of giving it back. Once we spend the one twenty-four, Corps of Engineers starts their design process, and it'll be spent. They won't get it back. I can't guarantee that statement, but I feel strongly that that's the way to be.
Hey Scott, how much money is the federal government putting in on this project?
Excellent question, okay? This total project is about two-point-four million dollars, okay? So, we paying seven hundred and sixty-four thousand of that, two-point-four million dollars. So, it's a good deal, but it's still seven hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, okay? So, the trade-off to that is, if that tank falls in the Cumberland River. But go down there and look at it for yourself, okay? Then you'll know what we're dealing with. No, I, I, none of us like to do this project.
No, I'll be quite honest, I'm against doing it completely, but that's just, the money is being spent on it for, it's not our riverbank. Why are we having to fix the Corps of Engineers' riverbank? That's my philosophy. They want us to spend almost a million dollars to fix their riverbank.
Which is not, it's not ours.
Yeah, that's on ours. It's not ours, but we're spending money on it. Basically, we're just throwing that money out there for them to put rocks there.
But if the tank does slide in, we're liable.
Right. Are we? It's not our riverbank.
Yeah, we would be...
We built the sewer plant, even though the river...
DNA testing would show that it's Harthage's waste.
I don't think we need the liability.
So, it's a hard decision, I get that. Will we keep this one out over for a long time?
Yep.
But we got to. We gotta pay it, right?
If we wanna move forward, it's our choices.
Tear that tank down, build another one down the side?
Or the side of the tank, well...
No, on the other side of the lot or something, down the lower end of the lot or something.
You're out of my, my league there on all that.
I was wondering, I mean, tell me what the tank cost, you know?
Well, Steve's already got a process in place in case we decided to take that tank out. He's had a lot of...
We worked on a process, take the bottleneck out, but also realize that when that tank was put in, that's when TDEC upped our capacity from five hundred thousand to six hundred and twenty-five thousand. We would, I thought we'd have to go through TDEC to say, hey, is this a possibility if we take this line out and we don't use this tank? What, what do y'all have to say about it? Cause you're gonna change our whole permit capacity then. You know, you're, when you get into the permit and TDEC, I've never had to deal with that, but yeah, you're getting into a lot of stuff. Where are you gonna go if the sewer plant stays there? What are you gonna do thirty years from now? Twenty-eight year ago, you could mow around drying beds down that river that are laying on the bank. Now, there are no more, we're even standing on one. That's how much erosion's happening down there.
And if we don't stop it now, the rest of the plant will be ingested at some point in time.
And you get into costs, what's it gonna cost fifteen years from now, twenty years now if you have to do it? This federal, this federal will come back and offer you money to help do it fifteen years from now. We've been five years getting to this point, you know? I don't see, I'm kinda like Scott, I think the county would have to take the full fund if we went into one big municipal. We've had talks about it, we've had meetings about it, but for the town of Carthage, that's what we got, and for my future, that's where I see the town of Carthage wastewater plant being. I mean, my recommendation is, the liability's our, we gotta fix the riverbank as an offer.
Whether we like it or not.
Oh, yeah. And I agree, I hate to think that we're having to fix the, the federal government corps' riverbank, but every house down through there, if you wanna fight the federal government, I guess you can, but I think they pretty well are gonna tell you at the end of the day, you built there, and you know, you gotta play your part at it. And I think it was what, sixty-five, thirty-five on the project or something was the percent I ended up...
It was good.
Yeah, the deal is, money's good.
Yeah, so...
Still, two hundred, seven hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's still a lot of money.
But we got it.
We have it. My recommendation is, we borrow it, pay it out over time, and over the successive generations of taxpayers, as opposed to getting into some kind of financial trouble now. Does that make sense? Just remember this, whenever you, some of the concept is, yeah, could we buy that building? But I wouldn't recommend buying that building, or anything, like it, okay? Whatever you come up with, all at one time, yes, you got the cash, but there is the philosophy that municipalities, you spread it over the generations of people that are taxpayers, so that one generation doesn't have to make the full expenditure. So, that's one theory about it. I don't like that, but there's still, you gotta think about cash flow. How much cash you got in the bank, paying the bills will be, always be most important, particularly for the water sewer fund.
What about, so, can you split this debt? Can, like, let's just say, for instance, we could pay the one twenty-four, and then possibly borrow the five?
Borrow the cash, that's what I'm talking about.
That's what, that's your...
That's my suggestion.
Okay. Because, you know, if, if they do the study, and it's two years till we have to, you know, then you're doing interest on a hundred and twenty-four thousand, then...
Yeah, we, we look fund the one twenty-four, okay? But the rest of it, we'll need, I recommend, we borrow it and spread it out, and cash flow payments. I know how much we can borrow and how much we can spend. I'm never gonna recommend that we borrow more than we can afford. That's why you got the debt policies in place.
I'm gonna make that motion.
One second.
We gotta get to the agenda first.
Okay.
But it's there.
But if you start deciding, once you get there to the motion, if you have other questions, I'll do my best to answer.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. It's gonna be the charter required council compensation discussion and vote.
Well, I thought we're done with that. We're letting it go.
No, it's in the charter. It's, we gotta bring it up, there's three new council members, they have to vote on it. And by law, we have to follow the charter.
So, what is it now?
You're mad, we're mad they didn't buy the charter to pay y'all.
It'll be a penny now.
And we're, well, no, it's a penny, but it was just, that's ridiculous. We're not gonna write checks for a penny, that messes everything up. Yeah, for a penny, it's just ridiculous. But I believe every other council around here gets paid, South Carthage, Gordonsville, County.
Are we in discussion on this right now?
Yeah, cause there's no motion.
Okay. I did some research on this, just to, in case you don't know, so it is in our charter. None of us ran or on the council for, for money, but it is in our charter. I think it is insulting to the position and all of us to just get like a penny or a dollar. We're not trying to make money. They have to write the checks, put up the sign W fours, this is something they have to keep track of. Hopefully, this council will look at changing the charter. This could be one of those things we should discuss when we get to change the charter, but for now, we're stuck with paying us something, and I think it should be a respectable amount. The Gordonsville City Council gets paid twenty-five dollars per meeting, I talked to their city reporter. The South Carthage City Council gets paid fifty dollars per meeting, per their city reporter. The Smith County Commission gets one hundred and twenty-five dollars per meeting, the full commission. When they break off into committee meetings, then they get fifty dollars per meeting. The Smith County Commission is also compensated with a salary to one-fourth of the county mayor's salary split equally. So, I mean, I'm not trying to get money off the city council here, but like I said, we should do something that is not just a joke for a dollar or a couple of dollars.
Comfortable about it, you can cash that check and donate that money back to the city. You don't wanna take that twenty-five dollars, or fifty dollars, or a hundred dollars, whatever.
Well, what kind of, I mean, what amount would you?
I mean, I don't, I didn't vote for the money, and I don't think that I would be a good steward of the money if I took the money.
We have to take something.
We gotta, which I know is a joke to y'all, but it's a check for a penny, but...
We're not writing checks for pennies.
And, and that's, I'm glad we're not.
You can't.
But I just...
But then we're violating the charter.
So, you're writing for a dollar now, because you can't write a check for a penny?
No, no. We're not writing them at all.
Not writing them at all, so we're in violation, basically?
We're violating the charter, yes.
Which town of Carthage has been in violation of the charter since that charter was implemented in nineteen ninety-one.
I'm just saying, it's not, it's nothing new.
That doesn't make it right.
It's nothing new, it's just something that needs to be addressed. I mean, we have to change the charter, let's change the charter, but that takes a year.
Takes a year. Does anyone have any recommendations on council pay?
I recommend you go with twenty-five dollars a month, and, I mean, that's not, it's a very minimal amount, it'll cover your gas to get here and whatever, I mean...
Meeting or month?
Uh, meeting, not a month, every meeting. So, if it's special call means you get twenty-five or whatever, but...
So, twenty-five dollars a month would put us at the equal to Gordonsville City Council, which is compensated the less.
Yes, the least amount, like, if y'all are uncomfortable taking money, take the least amount.
I personally feel like that's being good stewards of our money. I don't, I'm, twenty-five dollars per meeting for the city council is gonna be my motion?
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second, now do we have any further discussion?
I will say, I think the biggest reason for this, and it goes back...
I know what it is.
Okay.
I know what it's for. Back then, you know, money, you know, you could pay somebody money to get a vote.
But you, but we're also going through two and three meetings, meetings a day, which is ridiculous.
Yeah, it's just to keep everybody honest, it's what it's for. That's their philosophy anyway. Twenty-five dollars is not gonna keep anybody, if they're that, gonna be that crooked. All right. No more discussion, we'll do a roll call vote, cause it deals with money.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Green?
Kinda abstaining.
If you want to.
Councilwoman Green?
No.
Councilman Lippich?
Yes.
Councilman Petty?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hackett?
I'm going abstaining as well.
Motion passes with two abstentions.
May I have an item of clarification that begins with this meeting?
Yes, it starts today.
Okay.
Who'll be in compliance for the first time since nineteen ninety-one?
No, we got one check before, didn't we?
Oh, did we? Did y'all, then they voted down? Okay. All right.
I would encourage you, if you get your check, if you don't want it, cash it and give, give it back to the town. Don't leave it out there as outstanding, cause that messes up with...
Yeah, cause it costs you thirty-five dollars to cancel a twenty-five dollar check.
Exactly, exactly right.
So, just give it to your grandkids, put it in the bank, whatever you're gonna do with it. Next item on the agenda is new business, is first reading of FEMA ordinance, CO two-oh-two Daniel, you wanna explain the FEMA ordinance, please?
We have to do this every so often, FEMA requires it. I don't know how much you guys understand about FEMA. It's a, it's always complicated, but we have to do this to stay within our NFIP program, and NFIP allows our citizens to get flood insurance, not privatized, which is much more expensive. If we are in a disaster area, which we have been before because of flooding, it allows us to apply for disaster relief. We're allowed to apply for grants, so if we violate anything FEMA-related, we lose our NFIP, basically, and it's, it's a big deal to the city, and this is something that they require us to do. It structures out our guidelines for how we deal with FEMA. So, it's the best I can explain it without you guys reading the ordinance, but it's all in your pockets.
Y'all won't take a few minutes to read it? We can do that, or whatever.
I can add that it's not unique to Carthage, they make you, everybody's, this is...
Hey, you guys will do it again, what, four times? Three times?
I don't think it's years.
It's got them red.
I like, that's a resolution.
So, what you're saying on the, is...
It's a big, big one.
The ordinance.
I'm sorry, Michelle.
So, what you're saying is...
This is the ordinance.
Yeah, it's, it's a...
It's very lengthy.
It's a very thick...
Like twenty-six pages?
Yeah, it's a very thick ordinance.
I know, yeah, we know.
Well...
Here, let me try, let me try and read it, or not read it, but explain it kind of the way it is. Basically, what this is saying is, is we have told the federal government that we adopt a floodplain zone map. We've also identified areas of the floodplone, flood, floodplain, floodway, flood zone, and we've designated different numbers to those, that way they say, okay, you've identified these problems, what's your, what do you do in case of emergencies, so on and so forth? And those people in certain areas qualify for federal funding on their insurance. So, if you went to, let's say, State Farm and bought flood insurance, it'd be a lot more than going to the federal government and buying flood insurance. And we're in compliance, we're all, they set down the regulations for us to be in compliance for this.
This is their template.
Yeah, we didn't, we don't make this up, the federal government sends this to us, that this is what you have to go by in order to get federal funding. It says, protect human life, health, safety, and property, minimize expenditure of public fun, public, public funds for flood control projects, minimize the need for rescue and relief efforts, minimize damage to public facilities, the stuff that we have in place to, like a flood, like an emergency evacuation plan, stuff like that.
Like the guidelines of, if you live in a flood zone and you come see me for a building permit, I have to tell you, you have to do X, Y, and Z, and you have to do it to be in compliance. And this is the structure of why we do that and how we do that.
And, and number seven is the biggest thing that, on here, it says, ensure that the potential home buyers are notified that property is in a flood-prone area. That's one of the most important things. So, if you buy a house and they don't tell you, then you wouldn't qualify for the insurance, it's just, it's a mess.
They didn't tell me that I was in it when I bought it years ago.
What year was, was that nineteen twelve, what?
Too long, that wasn't this clogger.
That's terrible.
It used to be a thing that swept on the carpet.
Yeah, cause it was, it never came to the forefront, but now after two thousand and ten? Now, I mean, the only other option is, we could table this, y'all can go home and read everything, and then we can bring it back next month.
So, are you saying, no, we got, we got, there's four readings?
Two.
Oh, there's one more reading?
Yeah, we'll read, we'll, we'll come back and do this again. You can vote yes tonight, and then vote no next month.
But I would advise against the add the floodplain manager of the town of Carthage.
But he just wants to read it.
No, I, no, I get that, I'm just saying that there's, there's really no way around dealing with FEMA ordinances. Would you agree, Mr. Ray?
Yeah, so, you know, there's gonna be a lot of stuff that you guys do on the council routine that you just have to do if you're gonna apply for a grant to get backup cameras, you gotta pass the resolution to apply for the grant. It isn't anything that's, nobody's trying to do anything or change anything, it's just a routine thing that you're gonna have to vote on. This is one of those things. You're gonna have to vote on this, and you're gonna have to do it because your citizens need to be able to get flood insurance. FEMA ain't gonna let you change the language. You do need to read everything, I'm not suggesting that you don't read anything, that'd be a bad lawyer, if they told you not to read everything, but this is not something that you're gonna be able to avoid passing, and it's not something that you're gonna be able to change. So, I'd recommend that you go ahead and vote for this. If you do read it, and you have any questions between now and first reading, let me know, let Andre know, let Danielle or the mayor know, and we'll answer any questions we can about anything specific thing, but the recommendation's gonna be, you gotta pass it, and it's just part of the, part of the routine things that you'll do from time to time. Yes, sir?
Uh, I need to ask if I should not vote on this because it involves me. I left by flood insurance. It also involves all my neighbors.
It's, it's not a conflict, you're not receiving any direct financial benefit.
I just wanna clarify that.
No, you're, you're kidding.
And it's always good to be able, if, if you ever feel like you have a conflict, you're always free to say that, and, um, but the conflict law's really very narrow. And you definitely do not have a conflict, and it's time for you to vote on this.
Then I'll make a motion if it's silent.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Next one's gonna be the hard one. It's January second, council meeting date changed. Do we wanna leave it on the second or move it to the ninth? Well, let's make, make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
We got a second? All in favor? Okay, so, gale motion, and then you've got Councilman Green and Councilman Hackett both seconded, and then it passed it in asleep. Next one, uh, I wanna make the motion that we add the vice mayor to all bank accounts.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a recommendation to move Brayden Alvis from C three to great, C three grade ten twenty point oh eight to C three grade thirteen twenty-one sixty-three. That number, that twenty-one sixty-three is the same exact salary that was there, the person he replaced. We just brought him in at a lower number. And let them, let him prove that he's, could do what he does. He does all of our asphalt repair, concrete, he runs all the equipment. He's a stellar employee, but we're not gonna start him out at this rate until he says, till we see, yeah, you can do what you say you can do. And he, he has proven that, it's been.
And he works with Les?
Yes, sir.
And Les is?
Yeah, they, they, they've made the recommendation to me.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
All in favor? Motion carries. Yeah, we better do a roll call, money, forgot. I'd say, I'm new at this too, only been doing it two years.
Uh, Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilman Lippich?
Yes.
Councilman Petty?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hackett?
Yes.
Okay, now the next one. Cost share invoice Corps of Engineers, Banky Rosen Project, that's the hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars.
I'll make a motion that we pay it.
Second for discussion?
Okay, we're in discussion. Who wants to go first?
Mayor, you indicated you're not completely convinced that we're liable to.
I just don't think that we should be. I mean, that's my personal opinion. I mean, it's not our, it's not our riverbank. I mean, it's not, nothing that we did. We didn't cause this problem. Yes, we built the sewer plant there, but I mean, when we built it, it was forty or fifty feet from the river. So I mean, that's like, I mean, there's no way around it, it's the federal government. I mean, there's no way around it, but I just don't feel comfortable spending these taxpayers' money for something that they didn't do.
Can we move the tank? Which is, would, would it be best to move, try to move the tank?
I, that's something, Steve would have to tell you that.
Yeah, about the way the plant process is, we don't have a lot of room down there. And it's all flood zone. It's, the way it's built on the riverbank, the, the original plan in the sixties, they actually had, used the drying beds that had fell off the river. The plant now that we're using, originally, it didn't have the tank. They put it in in nineteen ninety-two, my understanding, to give us more capacity. Uh, it's a big part of the process, and it's probably our biggest process in taking the plant. Can I get by without it? Are you running the process? Probably. I would definitely go through T D A. But at that point, sooner or later, we're gonna have to add on to the sewer plant. We're gonna have to make it bigger. So why are we taking something away that we're gonna have to add back to later? Uh, and at that, we still have the liability, I think. You know, I can't think, what if it was down at the city park? You know, what if the lights were falling off at city parks, would be, we'd be responsible for fixing, I mean.
Can you speak to that?
Um, well, I don't know a ton about the situation, but I will tell you that accretion from a river is, um, something that's been around in the law for a long time. And I, um, I don't know that you can avoid being responsible for it. Um, if you, you've gotta shore up your property, you've gotta shore up your tank, if it's at risk of going in the river, and you can't let that happen. You know, I'm glad to look into it in more detail and see what the situation is, and see if there's any federal program that might provide assistance for that kind of thing, but as far as just the law.
Well, I mean, they're, they're, they're giving us quite a bit of money to do it, but it's just still gonna cost us almost a million dollars of our taxpayer's money for something we didn't do.
Yeah, but who's to say next time there is no assistance?
Who's to say there's a next time?
That's, that's possible.
At one time, you had to get a permit to pump water out of the river to irrigate your farms with. So they're water, so still they're water.
Like I said, I, I'm not, y'all six could have decided on that.
Well, do we have time for clarification on this before the deadline to lose the grant?
What clarification do you need?
We're one hundred percent liable.
If you're gonna fall in the river eventually, or we're gonna make use of what's available to us now.
I'm sorry, I should have re-stated that. But are, are clarification on the liability on, on us?
I don't know about the liability. I disagree with the mayor, he knows that.
Okay.
Because, you know, I'm the one, we've all talked to him. Bottom line of it is, are we willing to take the risk of that land falling into the river? Losing that much land, and we still have a sewer plant there that is fifty years old.
And the EPA fines?
And the EPA fines. But to me, the bigger risk is, what happens if we lose enough land that we can't process sewage?
In my argument is, what happens if it doesn't fall in the river? What happens if it doesn't keep going? What happens? There's, there's always what is. But I can go with these six people at this table that are smarter than me, and I'm gonna let them make the decision.
Generally, natural changes in the flow of the waterway are the responsibility of joining landowner. You guys would just go landowner, like if somebody had a house on the river.
It's the same, I, I know we're, we're legally obligated to it, and I'm not saying that we can get out of it, I'm saying I don't agree with it.
I don't agree with it.
We can't, we can't get out of it, there's no way to get out of it.
Well, this, this started like five years ago.
But hold on a second, Steve. I just want the citizens to know that it's not something that we really want to spend this money on, because it's their money. We don't wanna give away seven hundred thousand dollars to put rocks on the riverbank.
Exactly.
But they, they need to know that, so I mean, there's, we don't need to, unless they wanna hear more about the project.
As a supervisor and looking at the project, what happened with two thousand ten flood? But anytime now, if you go across the bridge and you look over toward, uh, the South Carthage side, and you see water backing up in them fields, it's probably coming up in the plant, on that tank down there. And when the water goes back down, right now, there's like four trees sticking out like this with big root balls up in the bank. Now, if they go, if they go out, you're up against the tank. We're within ten or twelve feet at one place.
Do you have the drone footage?
Sir?
You have the drone footage?
Uh, I don't have, we, we do have drone footage that Rusty did for us.
Why don't we, why don't we email the drone footage to each one?
Yeah, I can, we can send you that.
That way they can get first-hand knowledge of it.
But just the liability to me, you've got a hundred and fifty thousand gallons of, of bottled solids in this tank that we're processing. And for whatever reason, uh, if it slid off, or the pipe busted, it got a burn or something, it got running down the river, you're looking at a contamination with T D A, but we're not gonna come back from. I mean, they can bankrupt the town of Carthage quick. It's gonna be nice. And with my name being the one on all the, all the permits and everything down there, I just highly suggest that we fix it. If you go down there and look, or you'll see, and I'll get you the drone footage, there's an old fence, that's the original fence, it's laying down on the water. Some of the drying beds have slipped completely off the bank. Some of them, the water's ten foot up under them now, the bank is. But the erosion, I'll just say, we gotta fix it. We can let them come in, we're getting like one point six million dollars of federal money on this. Let's be proactive on it, let's get it fixed, and go on with it. Because like I say, we're doing the, we're doing the collection system, we're, we're a wastewater plant. I'd hate to know that we was working on a wastewater plant and we still hadn't fixed the riverbank, you know? So I just highly suggest that we at least take this step, and as far as how you find it, that's, that'd be up to y'all. But as a supervisor, I highly suggest that you get, that you don't get this project done.
But the bottom line, the drone footage showed, the bottom line is the river's eating the town slowly. So if you do nothing, it's gonna keep coming. So I don't like to spend the money either. I wish the Corps would fix their riverbank, but they're not going through it without us putting our party in.
Which is to tell you on FEMA too, it's, it's changed our map provisions. It's pushing further into floodplain area. So now we're, we're getting further into land because the stream's widening and the erosion bank.
If this, if this folder here was drying bed, Ricky Brown said twenty years ago, he was mowing around that drying bed. Now, the bank's up underneath there, that's how much of it's sticking out over the water. Some of the土is gonna slip off the bank.
Just so you have all possible options. So the Corps has been five years now on this project, okay? So if you authorize this money, you'll have a resolution that says, here's for the design fees, hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, okay? Of that part, we're gonna go to, uh, South Carthage and ask for thirty percent, which I've alerted you to, okay? If you choose to continue to put off, because it's been five years of study, work, put into this thing, okay? But it's not like it's just a brand new. You guys just happen to have the good fortune to kick it off, okay? The money part. So they're not gonna do the work. We thought it was gonna happen this spring. That's why, there's another factor for the increase. We thought it was gonna happen this spring. Uh, they pushed it back now to twenty-six. But in order to get, this is as close as we've ever gotten to getting it moving, okay? And so if we say, and I don't know this, but if we go back to them and say, okay, council said we're gonna study it some more. The way it's gonna get pushed back, and who knows if it'll still be there?
They want their money this way.
Yeah, and you have the letter.
They said that this, once this project started, it will stay on the shelf. I mean, we can actually enact it at any time. If we pay this hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars now, and we say, hold on, we wanna wait two years, we can take, we can push it back. We don't have to do it right then and there.
But I wouldn't pay the hundred and twenty-four if we think we're gonna push it back.
No, that's what I'm saying, but we can do that in the process.
But here's the other thing, consider. We now know that the Corps of Engineers has funds available to help us with water lines once we're in the Yellow Brick Road. Okay? Now, will we ever get it? I don't know. This was held up because Congress couldn't pass.
The budget.
The budget, okay? Who knows what'll happen? But the best we can do is use the information we got now. That's the best we can do.
And, and ultimately, my recommendation's going to be, though, to pay the hundred and twenty-four thousand, because I, we did make some big contacts. And we're talking about millions of dollars for water lines with a, a better percentage than the state would give us, but we may never. Yeah, I was gonna say, we may never see that money, but we've got it. So we've got a motion and a second. Do we want any more discussion, or vote?
What's the lot of expenses left on this tank? What's, what's the tank good for?
The tank? Uh, well, we just put a new valve in it. It was put in in ninety-two. And we did a valve in-house, but as far as the tank and, and the capacity of it, that spent the lifetime, I would say, be a good another twenty, twenty-five years.
I didn't know, you know, it has some kind of creep.
Yeah, it, it's a major part of the plant, as far as processing the bottled solids. Probably the hardest valve in the plant to replace. And I will say this, by getting some equipment in that we have purchased, we have been able to do more work in-house. You can't, a backhoe's great, but you can't put it on banks down there that we got. You can't get in between tanks. But getting that mini X, getting that skid steer, we've replaced four valves in-house that probably we've got fifteen thousand dollars in, would have cost us a hundred and twenty-five thousand if we contracted out. I mean, just having that equipment has meant so much. We get ready to do something, we work departments, work better than they've ever worked. I can pick up the phone, call Gary, call this. And they do everything they can to make sure I get what equipment I need. But, yeah, this area, I mean, nobody wants to spend that kind of money, but, but we gotta, I don't know, Scott can probably tell you what they got the wastewater plant feared as far as on depreciation. But we've gotta keep that thing operating, we gotta keep the permits good, and I think fixing that riverbank is top priority right now, from operations.
Any more discussion, we're ready for a vote. Roll call.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilman Lippich?
Yes.
Councilman Petty?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hackett?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, the next one is rescind the bid for water main replacement phase one and self-perform. Boy, this is a doozy. Um, we had the engineers draw it up, they had a contract drawn up, and we bid it out. Sent the contract to, uh, the contractor and to our attorney. Our attorney says, no, 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 you can't sign this contract. Only one liable under this contract is the city of Carthage. It relieved the engineers, the contractors, everybody from liability except for us. They contacted our insurance and said, if something happens, we're gonna drop your insurance. Basically, Public Enemy Partners said, we're not gonna insure this project. Because you're taking all liability. Am I pretty, pretty clear?
Put on that. They had put in a number of provisions that people try to put in construction contracts routinely. It's not unusual to put them in. But it required you to have provisions in your insurance policy to waive all insurance coverage for this particular project. Um, and so you all contacted Public Enemy Partners, and they said, we're not gonna do this. They don't, Public Enemy Partners will not.
Andre actually did that for us.
Yeah, and they, um, that's routine for P P P. I've do, done a lot of work for them, and they will not, it's in your actual insurance policy. It says, you will not sign a contract that waives these rights. And, um, so you can't do that. Andre, I know, uh, with the mayor and Danielle tried to, um, get the engineer and the contractor to change the language of the contract, and they, um, did not want to do it. They wanted all of the responsibility to be on the, um, on the town. And, uh, that was not acceptable to, to the town, and I don't blame you at all. I wouldn't do that either, so.
So basically, what we're doing, we're gonna, if y'all vote to rescind the bid, we're gonna do the work ourselves. And Scott just told you, we're gonna do it for a hundred dollars a foot as opposed to four hundred and seventy. We're gonna save, was it one point zero five million dollars on that one project? That'll be a savings of one point zero five million dollars of us doing it ourselves. Now, we have a couple of options.
You gotta tell them the risk, though, too.
What's the risk, Scott?
Do we have enough staff to get the job done?
I was, I was just gonna get into that. That's not a risk. The risk is we don't get it done by twenty twenty-six if we don't spend all this six hundred and seventy-four thousand dollar federal money that's sitting in the bank. That's the risk.
It's not sitting in our bank, but it's.
Yes, we have, we have A R P money of six hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. That's gonna cover this whole project. It's not gonna come in, any money's gonna come out of our accounts, except for the initial payment, that reimbursement. But we have to spend it all by twenty twenty-six, December twenty twenty-six.
Sounds like we'd almost save more money doing it ourselves, even if we had hired another person.
What? I was gonna suggest three, but.
Well, I.
A whole crew.
Probably.
A whole line installation crew, because we figured it out. Um, if you pay them twenty-five dollars an hour, no benefits, no nothing. Uh, that's another hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars a year, so we'll only save about nine hundred and sixty thousand. But that's up to y'all. I, that's, that was gonna be my, I was gonna bring that up tonight, I was gonna bring that up, because we're not gonna start putting water lines in till we probably finish hole up, but then wait till it gets a little warmer. But I'd like to hire three to be a pipe installation crew, and we're gonna keep them employed first.
What's Les say about this?
I don't know, but there's, there's one doing it.
Oh, you're doing it, what'd you say, man?
Uh, I have full confidence that we can do it in-house, but it is gonna take some more employees. Right now, we are doing Hole Avenue, and it's roughly about fourteen hundred foot. And what was the savings on that, Scott? Do you remember that off the top of your head?
It's about three hundred dollars a foot, a little over three hundred and thirty-five dollars a foot.
Is what we saved.
Yeah.
Based on the two bids that we have, which is the latest information we have for bids.
Right. Uh, we are doing it with a three or four-man crew, including myself, on top of the other work that's being performed in the city. And it is pretty taxing at times, uh, so it is gonna take, uh, some more employees. Hole Avenue, we've had the luxury of working on it two, three, four days a week, getting caught up on the other stuff the rest of the time. Uh, but hiring more employees will enable us to stay on it five days a week.
And we've got so many roads that we're gonna have to fix.
Twenty-seven miles worth?
Yeah.
Now, that's just, that's just water lines are doing, that, that's not counting the sewer.
Yeah, so.
So if we hire a crew and they know how to do water and sewer, if we can get somebody just to do the pipe bursting.
No, this wa, this wa.
Hold on, let me finish. Because the pipe bursting is what we can't do, right? Those of the sewers.
Can't do pipe bursting, we can't realign manholes.
Right, but if we hire an outside company just to do that part of it, is what I'm saying, the manholes and stuff like that. If we have a full-time crew, they could do that.
Which is pretty much all the sewer lines that's identified in the I N I.
Yeah, I mean, just, if, if there's a line under the ground, it needs to be replaced. I mean, that's just basically the bottom line. But on the whole project, we saved four hundred and twenty thousand dollars already. So we wanted to start something small, see if it's gonna work, and it's working, we're saving money. And they're still performing the other job duties as it is. But if we could dedicate three employees to that, we could be away, we could start paving roads probably next year sometime. I mean, everybody, who hasn't driven the roads in this town? Everywhere you see a little chopped-up spot, that's a leak or, or something. It's not, there's not a road in this town that doesn't have it, except for Main Street.
So how much of this has to get done by twenty?
Twenty twenty-six, just that one project.
Scott can answer that one. He's got his hand, look at him.
We've got two more points to put in here, since I made it.
Go ahead.
We have. So we have approval to use the last COVID money. It's called the State Water Infrastructure Grant, okay? They're, they're giving us six hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars of construction costs, okay? We have to spend it by December of twenty twenty-six, okay? So we rescind it this time, okay? You have options to rebid and try to get the contracts through, whatever, and that's gonna be a whole other situation. But right now, my thoughts are, could we? my thoughts are, could we potentially fund three employees? Just remember, when you hire employees that are not part-time, you commit yourself to thirty years of those costs, okay? Will you stay that long? I don't know. You encumber the town for those employees unless you're planning on able to cut them loose later. So that's one thing you gotta think about. The other thing to think about is, to me, and we've talked about this, okay, and we talk and we're still friends, okay? We disagree, we're still friends, okay? I'm a hired hand, and I don't forget that, okay? But the relative is, why don't we start with one, okay? See how it goes. If we're still clicking along, uh, slowly expand it with part-time persons. So hire one full-time person with benefits. That'll be about seventy-five thousand a year with everything that's there. Then look at doing part-time labor, that'll take the little extra amounts, so you don't pay benefits and you don't encumber the town for the extra work. Still get your labor if you can get them. I don't know if we can get them, but that's, that's another thing. But we ease into that, and if we find out, hey, these guys are clicking along now with all of that, uh, then we can take the approach of saying what the mayor wants to do. Let's do our drinking water lines ourselves. And there are other municipalities that do that. Wilson County does that. We could do drinking water lines because it's not as technologically, uh.
Complicated.
Complicated, that's right. I don't know nothing about laying the lines, okay?
That's the reason that we bought all that equipment was so we could do sewer lines.
Do some of that. And, and they're doing fine, and we've got.
No, no, I'm not complaining about. But here, here's what I think. You hire one for seventy-five thousand, you hire three temporary.
Kind of seasonal.
Yeah, well, no, just temporary, because you call them seasonal, and, but what's gonna happen is you're gonna get people in this line of work that are gonna come in today, get paid Friday, and guess what? They may not be here Monday, because it's the kind of work it is. Might be replacing them every week if you use temporary or, or part-time or whatever, so.
So if we done the temporary, part-time, we're not putting ourselves at the thirty-year deal?
No, you don't have to, but the problem is finding the people that are gonna be here four days a week to, to do that.
What does one look like in that, Derek? What would one more employee, how much help would that be?
Obviously, uh, one helps anything, um. One would go a long ways. Two would go even further, um.
With you.
If he would make it right.
I think.
If he would do us right.
I think we could.
It takes four people to do the operation.
We can make a good run. If we had one more, then I wouldn't have to be out there eight hours a day. I could be planning other projects to keep them on going for, for the future, if that makes sense.
So rather than, what if you hired one and then looked for two of those? Or one more of them?
I'm good with that.
And then if later, if we need to bump it to two full-time? I mean, could we start with one and then add a? Does that make sense?
Yes, very much so, that's okay. Better to be with one instead of three, like, hey, we really messed this up, so, and trying to get rid of people. Yeah, one's a good idea, and then temporary. Mine was gonna be three temporary, but I'll take a full-time employee, Kevin, give him to me.
So do I need to make a, a motion?
Yes, sir.
First of all.
Oh, wait, we gotta, we gotta make a motion, or you gotta vote on rescinding the bid.
I'll make that motion.
Okay? All in favor, well, we gotta do a roll call. This is dealing money.
Councilman Gray.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilwoman Greg.
Yes.
Councilman Liffich.
Yes.
Councilman Petty.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hackett.
Yes.
And now you make the motion to, if you wanna hire.
I'm gonna say one full-time and one part-time.
Well, you, you can amend that. You don't have to put the part-time in there, because I can hire a part-time without council approval.
I'll say one full-time.
Second thing.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Greg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilwoman Greg.
Yes.
Councilman Liffich.
Yes.
Councilman Petty.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hackett.
Yes.
Can, uh, we put a date on that, when you want them to be hired? Immediately, two weeks, three months?
I mean.
I just don't wanna do it. You guys say, well, we thought we were waiting till spring or something.
No, y'all are being.
You want them out here?
I'll get them in here, start getting on train now.
Hiring process takes a little bit, so.
That's what I'm saying, I wanna make sure we have a date.
Soon as possible. It'd be after a few years.
Yes, Scott.
So you're increasing the outflow?
Yes, of money.
Alright, so this needs to be a budget amendment to fund more of the full-time position and part-time.
We're not, we're not dealing with the part-time right now.
We still need the money. We still gotta prove the money.
I know that's fine.
So it'll, it'll require two readings, is what Scott was trying to say.
Yeah, we have to put it in the ordinance. We can hire them. Never mind. We'll, we'll make it work. We'll do it right, you know that. I'm not gonna try to do nothing flaky.
What if we gotta do a motion to do it all this? Can you take one full and two parts and go hire the other second part?
Well, no, I don't need, I don't need, I, I've been, according to the charter, I can hire as many, I can hire fifty part-time people tomorrow. I could hire seventeen special deputies. That's what the charter says, but I'm not gonna do that.
Not having to do it over and over again.
No, what it is, is we have to move money. We have to move money into the line item for employees to change the budget, so it has to go through that ordinance that he was talking about earlier about changing the budget. That's what, that's what he was talking about. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
There's not enough money in that line item to take on a full-on other person, so we have to move the money from one spot to another to make it work.
I'd rather be reauthorized. For employees, I'd like it to be an ordinance that we increase our budget for another full-time position.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, I'm good with that.
I've got it written down to get to Andre.
Alright. Last two things on the agenda are the Resolution CR two zero two four one two zero five one. That's Resolution Regarding Citizens' Concerns, and the next one is CR two zero two four one two zero five two. Resolution Regarding Special Permits. Did you have y'all read those?
Yes.
Y'all taking them individual or together? Okay.
Make a motion, um, to, uh, is that your?
To Daniel Green.
There, there are two individual light items. I just wondered if you wanted to do.
Yeah, we don't have.
Yeah, you don't have to break them up. They're broke up already. I just didn't know if you wanted to vote together or not.
So funny, I'm gonna make a motion on an action on.
Number seven.
On number seven?
Set approved?
No, I've got some questions.
Second for discussion?
Yeah.
Second for discussion.
Wait, hold on. Hey, listen. When you make a motion, it has to be an action. Like, I make a motion to approve. Doesn't mean you're gonna vote to approve it. It means that's what you're doing to, you always make a positive reference. You can't say this, I wanna make a motion for discussion. So she say, I make the motion for approved. So one second, then you discuss it, then you vote on what you guys discussed.
Second.
Okay, now discussion.
My discussion is this right here, when the person's present desired to offer comments, uh, meeting may be permitted to do so upon oral request or accept. So are we cutting them off if they come in here late and don't get signed in and they won't speak?
It's not my resolution.
Well, I'm, I'm just asking.
I don't know. I, I'll be honest with you, I haven't read the resolution. I, I don't get a vote on that.
I think you're changing it right now. You have a sign-in.
Yeah, basically, I think it's to do with the agenda items and then the sign-in process. We had it emailed.
Yeah, I mean, I've read it, and I've went over it.
They just, they need to come in and sign in, and then they change it that it does not have to pertain to agenda items.
Right, and that is, but if anybody comes in late, they're still able to speak if we've not got to that point in the agenda.
I think that's.
And they don't sign.
Y'all vote on, y'all want people to come in anytime and just start talking in the meeting, that's.
No, I'm, I'm not saying that. I'm saying if they get here before we get to the citizens' concern, they can still talk. And I mean.
Oh, yeah, I'm not up there checking that.
Yeah, no one's ever said that they could.
As long as they come in and sign in and say they wanna speak.
Yeah, we don't, we'll make sure they're on the list.
That way, though, at one time, we're.
No.
No, they had to sign up prior to.
They had to email in because we were going by agenda items, and we wanted to know what agenda items, so we could prepare that agenda, so we have a good conversation.
Well, I mean, we all read, need to read this and, and make sure this is what we want. I, I agree with.
We can table it and, and.
I agree with the three minutes. The hour, if you've got a, something that's passionate to this town, if they wanna speak more, if it lasts more than an hour of public comments, I mean, we're getting paid to sit here now. We sit here and listen to all of them.
That's Dr. Governor Lee. He's the one that put that in there. We have to have a policy in place for that.
So, what, I'm sorry, man, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, prior, prior to two thousand twenty-three, the open meetings law was that you didn't, you could add things to the agenda during the meeting. All you had to do was just show up, and you could talk about anything that you wanted to in new business. And they changed the law in two thousand twenty-three, where now you have to publish your agenda in advance, so that the public knows what you're gonna be talking about. You can still add emergency items, but you just can't bring up anything that you want to. Prior to two thousand twenty-three, not every city council let people speak in the meetings. I think Carthage really always has, but lots of cities just don't let people talk. It's just the council doing your business, making your motions, voting, and, and then people go home. And they, the legislature wanted to change the law so that people could speak during meetings on agenda items or non-agenda items. And so you all, you all have already done that. That's really not a change for you. But what you had is, the law says that if you wanna have any restrictions on it, you have to have a resolution with the restrictions. So it's pretty typical that you have a three-minute limit, and that you don't let people go on and on. And in order to control the order of your meetings, they suggested that you put an outside limit on the total length of your public comment section. So you limit the overall length of the public comment section to an hour, but there's always an exception. So if you have something going on that's important and that you, people wanna talk about, the mayor can extend it by himself, or the council can vote to extend it. So if you get into it and people are still talking, and you wanna let people keep going hours up, that, you know, this is important and we wanna keep doing it, then you all just make a motion and vote to extend it to two hours or three hours or whatever you wanna do. So that's what this resolution says. You're really just complying with the new law. You're putting the limits in, but you've got the exception provision, so that if the council wants to let it go on, or the mayor wants to let it go on as the presiding officer, you can do that. Now, Section Two is about signing up. In Carthage, I think you all have always had people sign up to do comments.
No, the, the last one was we had to email.
Email.
They emailed it in, that way, for some people don't, I mean, they come sit down, they forget to sign in.
Right, and so this change then lets people who show up at the meeting, who failed to sign up or email in advance, they'll still, they'll now be able to talk at your public comment section. In other words, you're not having to send in advance notice anymore. That's what this is changing. But again, definitely read it. If you have any questions about it, let the mayor know, or me know, or Danielle, and we're glad to answer any questions. That's what it is.
So what was the actual law that, is two thousand and twenty-three?
Right, so prior to two thousand twenty-three, again, many, lots of cities didn't let people talk at all. Carthage always did, so that didn't, that change in the law didn't affect you, um, but some cities had to start letting people talk, but they didn't let talk.
And they didn't use to push the agenda, and we, we've always, and I've been city reporter, have been ahead of that, and we've always pushed our agenda.
Yeah, okay. I just, I just don't want anybody to, um, you know, where they can't speak when they want to, because that's, that's what we're here for, is to listen to the, our people.
I actually think this opens it up better.
It does, and it's, it's more broad than the other one was.
I like that they don't have to email me.
There's no emails, there's no, no.
And everybody's agreeable. Oh, if it is something that this town is passionate upon, and we want to extend that hour to two, we should.
That's a, that's a non-starter until we come to that situation.
No, I'm, I'm just saying that we should exceed it, if, if it comes to that point. I know we can't make that, is, put it in.
I'm saying, yeah, we've gotta vote on the resolution as a, now, you can make a motion to add to the resolution, and we can redo it, but.
Is there any amendments you wanna do?
No, I mean, I just, that's the other thing. I, I like to say that's, that's it, it's just a.
I don't think any of the council would ever do.
I don't either, no.
Yeah, I mean, if there are people here lined up to talk, we're gonna let them talk. Just makes sense.
People's thing.
Makes sense. They put us here. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. The second one is regarding the resolution on street closures. All that is doing is adding the Halloween event to the other three closures.
I'll make a motion to add it.
No.
Oh, no, wait a minute, wait a minute, I messed up.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Yes. And any discussion?
We are closing or not closing Halloween.
No, no, it's adding it to the list of closures.
Oh, okay.
So that'll be the fourth road closure.
So there'll be four total road closures in the whole city. Can you, can you give me those, it's at Halloween and. Walton Days?
Tennessee Maneuvers.
Tennessee Maneuvers and the, uh, pep rally for Smith County High School.
And it's a given to hunk of parade, metro parade.
Yeah, but we don't, we don't, parades are not even on that.
They're listed in the resolution.
Well, they're in there because we have to list them, but we don't ever, Tetris Parade's gonna happen, Christmas Parade's gonna happen, Homecoming Parade's gonna happen. We're not really closing roads for that. It's just a slow down. And Brit handles it. The thing about it is, is like, Brit, Brit has the authority, like, we did it for the Baptist Church, that little section right there. There's no houses or nothing on there. He can close the road for them to have their Halloween, because it's not a.
Yeah, I got a lot of flack over that, right there.
What for?
Because they didn't come in front of the, uh, council and ask for that road.
They didn't have to.
Well, I'm just saying, I caught a lot of it.
Well, I'm just, well, they should've said, hey, what's going on with this, and we'd explain it to you. The police department can close side roads under discretion. Matter of fact, the charter says that they can handle all road closures, but there's a resolution that was put in place by the prior council before us, that the council handles all road closures, so that's why it's in front of y'all. Used to be the police department, because they would be the ones that would know if they could handle the problem or not. They can close side streets. They can close any street they want. It's in the charter. But they can't go like you closed Main Street without notifying us of that. And this was, this was a side street. You know where the Baptist Church is, right there?
I guess what I'm saying is, or I guess what I need to say is, you know, when I was a kid, Al Gore ran for president. And we closed, we closed the town, and then we closed. Are these the only four, or is there some, do you have to go back to the?
That's the only four.
Secret Service being.
If, if saying that, you're pigeonholing yourselves, and I, I don't want to close the.
Yeah, what if the Smith County Girls' Basketball Team wins the state championship, and we wanna have a big throwdown on the square?
Would that fall under pep rally?
Well, it would be out of a pep rally, but it would be, that's our football, but I mean, I don't know. I mean, it's one of those things. The reason that this resolution came up is because a lot of the business owners on Main Street said, hey, y'all are closing this road down all the time, and I'm losing business.
I agree with that.
And I'm losing business, because you're closing Main Street. We've tried to give an alternative place for people to do it. I'm gonna, I'm trying to put bathrooms into the dog park and put a staging down at the ball, the dog park. It's wide open. Go down there and have a celebration all you wanna have. You don't have to be in the middle of town and shut businesses down because you wanna have a pep rally on the square. So we, they said, they, they agreed to the three, and now we've agreed to four. It's kind of a, working together with the community, you know, the, the businesses and the people.
Some of the side roads are easy to close or small.
Yeah.
We can handle it. You, you start closing some of the bigger streets like Main Street, and it's a big event. We, we don't have the manpower. We don't have the, the stuff we need to, so, uh, Smith County Rescue Squad helps us with that, so. And they always help us with the parades as well every year, just so you know, so.
Boil.
Yeah, I'm not just saying, let's have a bar mitzvah on Main Street. I'm saying, we oughta have an, an opportunity to, if it's big. Opportunity to, if it's big, we, we should have.
Well, who determines if it's big?
I think running for president was big.
Well, I think if the Secret Service came in and said we're closing Main Street, I don't think our police department would say, no, you're not. I, I don't believe that would happen, but, I mean, we could take it on a case-by-case basis when it comes up.
So what they, Anthony, if that came up, what we, this council could do is we could amend this same resolution again. That's what happened with this. Was this a re, resolution a few months ago, just stated Walton Days, Tennessee Maneuvers, Smith County Pep Rally. And then the same resolution got amended to add hometown Halloween, so there's our.
Or you could just make a resolution for a one-time closure on, if it's not gonna be an annual event. Say, I wanna make a resolution for a one-time closure from third to here for two hours.
Well, I get the fact you don't wanna, you know, you don't want it closed, just.
No, no, I, I.
Just ever, ever.
It doesn't matter to me.
But, um.
So if things arise in the future, and someone comes down here to ask if they could close the roads, because they wanna have something in town, like he's saying about the basketball?
Well, that was just an example. I understood, I understood we were going with softball, basketball, football, whatever.
So you have to go by the resolution, you can't just say, okay, you know, this is something big.
No, you could come in and say, okay, they can get, they're gonna get in touch with y'all first anyway, and say, hey, I've had citizens want to do this for this. And as a party, as a group, you will decide, okay, yes, this won't hurt the businesses, yes, we'll do this. That's what you six are for. You could take this, that resolution, say, I don't wanna vote for this resolution at all, make your own. That's, that's what y'all are here for.
One question. You have the business in town, does it hurt your business when the votes are closed?
I, I think we should leave businesses out of this, um, it's just, it's not good business, but, you know, I mean, I don't, no comment on that, it just depends, um.
If the businesses are open or closed, too.
It just depends on what's going on. I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll leave you with a positive. Walton Days is a great business boost. The pep rally can be a, a great business boost. Tennessee Maneuvers can be, it just kinda depends. I think the, it's real quick to try to put the businesses in the middle of these street closures, which is just not even correct. Businesses don't really complain about this, in my experience. It's citizens. This council has for six years, businesses, they just keep throwing businesses in the middle, and they're not doing anything about it.
It's both.
Citizens and, that, that, that's what I hear about, school traffic, whatever, you know, those kinds of things. That's why it shouldn't be endless, in my opinion, but as far as businesses go, I don't, you know. It can be, it can be positive.
But it can be a negative. I said, I've heard different from, there's citizens saying, why do I have to drive around?
I mean.
I mean, we just paved Main Street, I just paid to have it paved, why do I have to drive on Spring Street? Because they wanna have fifteen concerts every Saturday. That, that's where it came in, where it's closing it every other Saturday.
That's, we kinda got out of hand.
Yeah, it was a lot.
And, and the thing about it was, is they could've had the five people sit up on the courthouse lawn and not close the road, but they had them in the street, so.
Like on that end of Main Street, it's most all facilities. But this end is your businesses, you know, like Jarnes, Haggard Hollies. They're, they're the ones that could suffer loss.
Well, also, one thing you have to remember, even though we authorized them to close the road, we're still responsible for everything that happens on that road.
I would, yeah.
Even though they got secondary insurance, we're still responsible. So if someone was to.
We can handle this.
Someone was to get run over, someone was to get hurt, guess who's, guess who's responsible? These seven people right here.
So I think there's the, the, uh, the, the, the resolution to adopt right now is to add Halloween.
Yeah, that's all, that's the only thing on there.
So, I mean, like, can I make a motion that we adopt this resolution?
We were, it's, the motion and the second's right there, we're in discussion.
Okay.
So if everybody's done in discussion, we can vote on. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. That's the last item.
Most deserved.
Most deserved, second.
All in favor? It's been a good meeting, though, I mean, it really happened.